You'll see Samuel in the back is monitoring that. He's gonna click the got it buttons that are popping up on that screen right there. And you're all set, have a good meeting.
Yeah, great. Thank you. It is Tuesday, May 30th at 6 o'clock for the Citrus Select Board meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to an order. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda? I can second it, but I just can't feel. So before we begin, I'd like to register. The Citrus Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreements. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minority communities, welcomed and respected. We ask our community members, all who participate, to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. So the first item on our agenda is something we do yearly and it is for the reorganization of the Select Board. So, is still time? Do we have any nominations for Chair? I would actually like to make the nomination if that's fine. I would like to nominate.
Thank you, I will second that.
Second, Ms. Canfield.
Thank you.
Do you accept the nomination? I'm gonna give it to, you know, put it on the floor, it's a discussion.
I hopefully, I hopefully, I greatly accept the nomination and I appreciate it. I look forward to serving the board in this capacity for my second time. So, thank you.
Should we?
Should we?
Should we so choose to like that? Any other comments for the comments?
Well, since I respect you, I will say that having served on the board when Ms. Curran was chair before, we are very against revenge now. So I heartily support this. Very nice, thank you.
Yes. Do we have?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Not a joke. It's funny.
Just the passing of the baton.
The passing of the baton.
Don't get any under with.
I don't wanna talk.
That's pretty good. Yeah.
We'll just push our computers. Thank you. I'll look for Mary and us. The seat's not long.
Alright, so we will continue with the reorganization. The Chair has been adjourned, thank you very much. Looking forward to it. Do I have a nomination for Vice Chair? Yes, it's a sidebar. Well, I mean, yeah. Good point. So before we move forward, I should welcome our newest member, Susan Harrison. So very excited to have her. Just don't be a bit of work for saying that before we continue. So very excited to have Susan join us, so welcome. Thank you. And with that, second order business is to elect a Vice Chair. Do we have any nominations for the Vice Chair?
Karen Conley, I would like to nominate Andrew Zerich for second in charge as Vice Chair.
Honor.
I think you're right, second.
Motion by Ms. Conley, second by Ms. Canfield. Any other comments? I think it's great. Having you again.
I appreciate that. Your honor.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Andrew's our Vice Chair, we're in.
Yep, thank you.
And we do need a volunteer for the clerk, which is a very important job. They have to read many long statements, extra signatures will require. Is there anyone who is willing to step forward?
Oh, I'd like to nominate.
Oh, you would, okay. Yes, as this tradition in this board, a long tradition, that we like to welcome our newest member as responsibility. And I'd like to nominate Susan Harrison.
I second that.
I second.
Second. Thank you.
No, did you get the motions ring? Sorry.
Yes.
I'm a little rusty. Okay. All in favor for Harrison?
Oh, yeah. Aye. Thank you.
You will not regret. Your reading oratory skills will be to good use.
Yes, fine. I'm gentle, sorry.
But we have a man's right.
So great. So, do we have a walk-in system? There being none, we will turn to Jim Wadde who reports this on the street, Jim.
Good evening. Last meeting in May, I believe we're getting this out in the summer. But as we get more into the summer, the water updates become more and more important as we track this in our reservoir. The reservoir is at plus a half inch right now. Last week we were at plus three. Jack crack fumarins at plus 1.5. Last week we were at plus seven. Average daily demand was up at 1.592 million gallons per day. Last week we were 1.493. We had trace amounts of rain over the last seven days at the plant. Reminder that we are on annual water conservation measures. They start on May 1st. We've made first since September 30th. Followed through water must occur before 9:00 a.m. and after 5:00 p.m. Automatic irrigation systems may be used one day per week based on your voting precinct. As we've spoken about, this is a state ban based on Aquifer District. Since we've launched that district and all the towns in that district have similar water bans in place. If you have questions, you go to the water department webpage and get information on when your precinct's water or other issues are on the water ban. Sticking with water, the iron and manganese pilot project is expected to be ready for inspection on June 5th. Putting it on schedule to be ready for the heavy summer water usage periods. As we discussed previously, this is a project to move the iron and manganese that is built up in the reservoir. It comes out in the water as the temperature rises and the water levels fall. We believe this is a major cause of groundwater last year. The water treatment plant is not cheap for iron and manganese. This is contact the project. We'll treat for that iron and manganese and also serve as a pilot for our water treatment plant to ensure that we're using the best system necessary to take that iron and manganese out of the water. So hoping to see some good results from that summer. We got some lighthouse, we'll see the contractor has mobilized. The fencing is up and complete and they've started working on the tower for the lighthouse. The remediation work and the blazing compound for the laning room has been completed. The contractor will now be moving the laning room and taking it to his off-site facility. Will be a template for the new laning room. That is, is, that to do, I think, a long days after a long weekend. That is expected to take place later this week. In the meantime, the work will continue on the lighthouse itself. The concrete slab at the top will be taken off and at least four feet of pressure will be moved coming down. That will be replaced every pointed. Electrical work inside, new staircase inside, new windows. So that work will be going on and that'll culminate with the return of the lantern later on this summer replacement of that. Just so people are aware, that is funded to the town's clean and preservation fund. If you would now on Jericho Road today, or Beavideam, you notice that the gas company is still working. It'll be there for another six, seven weeks. It's an eight-week project. It is reduced to one lane in both directions, so you will have to wait. We ask that if you can avoid that area, please do so. There are detail ops with the signs down there. The gas company will be working from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Labor Day is the official unofficial start of summer, but the official start for us, our lifeguards will be June 14th this year. That will be the date of the annual Peggy Beach Training Exercise. Training involves the lifeguards, the harbor master, police, fire, and AMS. They all work together to work on various scenarios and emergencies that may happen to make sure all the different departments, no one needs to be done on how to do it. It's pretty exciting if people are there, you get out there and watch it on that date. And then the lifeguards will begin staffing the beaches on Friday, June 60th. So between now and then, the beaches are open, but please have a little more caution than normal until we do get the lifeguards out there in the middle of June. In relation to that, the Citrus Town Library, partnership with the Recreation Department, was excited to announce the newly installed Little Free Library at Peggy Beach. Funding for this little free library was generously provided by a grant from the Citrus Education Foundation. The initial stock and books for the launch and ongoing supplies were provided by the Friends of the Citrus Town Library. How does it work? The free library operate on a share, leave a book, take a book philosophy. If you're headed to the beach, looking for a novel to read, take one from the Little Free Library. If you're home and finish a really good book that you think others might enjoy, next time you go to the beach, bring it and put it in the library. This is gonna be a pilot program. If it's popular and works, then we will expand that in the coming years to other beaches. So it's tough to read your iPad at the beach, this is a good way to get a couple of good books and get some reading in. Mike DeMayo, our Self-Responsible, has announced the seasonal closure of Self-Respect in the North and South River as of midnight tomorrow, May 31st. This is a seasonal closure that goes into effect due to what the state calls seasonal water quality changes. It will be in effect until October 31st of 2023. We'll continue to update people on Central Field. The fencing is up, the contractors began stripping that field up there. That's the installation of a new softball diamond and a new pairs motivation, the baseball diamond. That project will be going on until late in the spring and that is also a CTC-funded project. Two more quick ones. I had a tour of the Drew Project at Green Bush Nation this afternoon. Some members of the planning board and planning staff are there along with building and design review. That project has been delayed significantly due to COVID and supply chain issues. They are now scheduled to begin occupancy in July for the residential units and following that with retail units. Right now, they're looking at a mix of retail and probably a couple of restaurants in the spaces. They're pretty excited, they've got some real good interest both in the residential and the retail. So we're looking forward to see what that comes out to be. I think everybody's happy and excited to see that project come to completion after a lot of delays across my control. Then finally, we have a request from Citrus Food Pantry for donations of water. With the hot weather coming, they're running low on their supply and appreciate any assistance that people can give. We also ask to keep the food pantry in mind when you're shopping or make donations. The need does not go away with the arrival of nice weather when the demand goes up enough for anybody. If you can help the food pantry with donations of water or food stuffs, it would be greatly appreciated. And that's what I have for the season.
Thank you. Before I go to the board for any questions, which I also just wanted to say publicly, thank you to all the organizers for Memorial Day yesterday. DFW, our Veterans Association, Veterans Advisory Council, all the Marching Bands, DPW prepared blossom wreath, not blossom wreath, the common. Blossom wreath, which looked beautiful. It was just a really nice, nice day and thank you to everybody that participated in my, I know it's great. And Andrew gave a very nice speech. So, that's a job, so it's very good. Any questions for Jim? Karen?
From now on, I will assume if you say Karen, you're studying there.
Okay.
Maybe that'll be easier.
Go ahead.
Question, just a quick question. Do you have any idea if the staffing for the lifeguards is, is gone, okay? Do they have enough bodies?
I have noticed we got any word to the contract. We have very good retention with our lifeguard, a lot of them come back every year, so I haven't heard from any, anything to the contract, but we are fully staffed.
Okay, I guess I got the perennial question is, would they consider putting on rotation at low tide of lifeguard at the Midas Gate? Which has not happened for years and years, for recently. There's not, there's no beach very high like that.
Yeah, we could talk to Recreation, but they get that staffing, I don't think you staff for that, but we can ask. They at least take a walk down that way they want to.
Yeah, I think we could somehow re-talk the area because that's a very heavily used area. Alright, thank you.
Well, if I could piggyback onto that, I would suggest that Sand Hills has been without a lifeguard for a very long time. Completely without a lifeguard. So before we get another lifeguard up in our situation, I would think that we would give some consideration to Sand Hills. Hopefully we could do both if that's possible, but. Yeah, that's what I had to say. On the issue of the closing of the clam question, that is strictly a seasonal closure. It always happens. So it, it doesn't have anything to do with the problem of rock. Okay, just so people understand that, you know, we did have a problem with rock and pursuit treatment plant, which forced the closure of the clam plants for quite a while, but this is not really. There's, there's no.
There's no salt it's on tonight.
Oh, no, sorry.
That's true.
Ow.
Ow. Anything else?
No, that's.
Andrew? Susan?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Alright, moving on to our first scheduled item. We have Kelly Bauer, our Chair from the Beach Commission.
Hello.
To your final proof for our beach sign locations. Hi, Kelly.
Good.
Great, how are you?
Thank you. Just wanna tell you about the beach, we have to take the board and come in.
Thank you. Thank you. I can read this in our correspondence. Alright, so we have your backup and all your photos. Did you just wanna give us a brief summary as to where you are and?
Yes, if we could just get to slide six, please. The only real problems still outstanding, there are two, I guess, that we haven't addressed. The Midas Beach side, we suggested maybe just one side it would be better installed on that wall. And so that's what we're proposing. And the existing side, which with rules and regulations, would need to be moved over to the opposite wall.
Does that work by the main gate at Canet?
Legs and Canet, yeah.
And is there any issue with us fixing that into the concrete gym?
That sign is a material layout. Shouldn't be, that's real, that's a. She's, she should be, it's a concrete pole.
Okay. We have to have the rules and regulations side updated right now, so if it didn't, that works, this should work. So it would be less weather peaking. It would be very visible, having at least from the Canet main direction.
Does anybody have any issues with that? I, I'm so, I think, you know, I saw that picture, I was like, that's such a great solution. So, you know, you, you did talk with the Beach Association thing up.
We did, and let's give credit to CVC for the idea of installing.
She is an idea. And that's a great suggestion.
That's why I asked. That's really good.
Great.
So the other thing that was bothering Laura at least was the positioning at Museum. That's slide 13, please. She thought it was too tall, I believe it is.
It's hard to tell, I mean, I, I still think it's a little tall, but. It's just not, a little way that it looks, you know. How tall is that thing to the left?
It's all about four feet.
Yeah.
That thing is the harbor walk sign.
Right. Does it block it when you're driving by?
Well, that's what we would aim to do, is not blocking when it's installed. And this is all also contingent on dig stake, including the locations.
Any questions for Kelly about this location?
Is that one taller than the others? It's not, it might be my photo shopping. I would know, strictly proportional on these, they're just good, that's.
They're all the same height, okay, thank you.
Yep, it's supposed to be four feet tall.
Um, I still hear a little back and forth about what part of that beach is public and what part is private. So I'm wondering, and this is probably not your thing to do, but if the town could put up some sort of sign or the, the, the others, probably actually, in concert with the town, should determine beyond what point it is not a public beach. Is that possible, Jim? I mean.
You have to have a survey.
I think we have one. Didn't we go through this exercise when we had, when we didn't plan to land this grass and we made everyone move their, come loose and hide it?
Yeah, I don't think we did a survey on that because no one would object to the grass being planted in the dunes, whether it was on their property, the town's property, that's something I don't have to plant a grass. To get a definitive way to get to the property, you'd have to have some proper survey.
Well, would, would the homeowners and the yacht club, because I just noticed the two of those, have some sense of to which, to what point it's theirs versus the town's? I, I, I know what I'm saying, I, I understand.
According to the assessment database, it's all private and Lucian, so.
You mean it's all public?
No, private, privately held by each team, so I don't know.
Well, it's, if, if, we've been through this a couple of times, but if that were the case, then I don't know what right the town had to tell people to get their boats off.
Sure, of course.
And their kayak.
And that's all things that are already there.
I don't understand why.
It would because it's a conservation. So we have jurisdiction over those things, whether they're on private property or public property. If you destroy them or violate conservation rules, we can tell you to stop them. So.
So we don't, we think we may not own that property at all. Are you looking it up, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay. Why don't you?
Before we get back to the.
Yeah, so you said we'll come back to this one in a minute.
I mean. Again, these are photoshopped in, so I mean, but the fact that it isn't perfect, it's, we're talking four feet tall.
Absolutely.
I know you have the gentleman, the gentleman there, kinda show.
He's got his head down those.
Yeah, so, and then it's. Yeah, it's angle perspective, it's all.
He's holding the eight foot measure, is what he's doing, so I can Photoshop it to the right.
Yeah.
And it, again, no, it's fabulous, you even able to do this, which is, so, I mean, four feet, not comfortable, I don't.
But, but I think this begs the question, if the assessment's map says that it's private property, why are we putting a sign there? Well, that's why I'm asking. Right, yeah, I wanna clarify it.
When you click on it, it just says there's no, no data associated with this parcel.
Well, is anyone paying taxes on it? Well, why don't we move forward with, with the rest of it and leave this one as the last one that gets installed pending, you know, confirmation on whether it's private, public, and. Do you want me to get chosen as the party, Jim?
No, I'll just get back there.
There is, there is the harbor walk sign installed there to downsize, so we should do a homework, but I think that. I would just hate to fabricate a sign and wind up in some legal tussle for no good reason.
Tussle free.
Is there another one you wanna see of that coming?
No, everything else, we're all familiar. So we can review them while we're waiting.
Alright, thank you so much for all of the work that you and the committee put into this and the thought, um, outreach to let folks that are near the beaches. I think it's really, there's been a wrong slog, but the final product is really shows the thought for this that you guys have put into it.
Thank you. Everyone really likes to design, that's one thing I'm happy about. Even the others who came to talk about it, they said it looks very good enough, which is, shouldn't be this path instead of this path. This is, another stuff. Are they going to stop people going loading at Museum Beach if one thing always is? Not by justice.
No parking signs, you know, stopping signs, that would solve that.
Well, that's one thing I wanted. David Road, like, one of the things that Jericho, they had, they had no parking sign, and they wanted to know why that would take a year. I don't know.
That's, that's rules and rights, and I know that that was visited a couple of years ago, like, and they added it for. So that's, yeah, I would just advise the, the folks that aren't one of there to, to kind of attract the cons, right, because that's their.
The issue we might have on those side streets is people want to put no parking sign and not apply to them.
Yeah.
They can park there, their family can park there, their friends can park there, no one else will park there.
Everyone can be drawn on that.
It's no parking means no parking, so at, at that, they tend to select their side.
Right, I, I think, yeah, that was, it has come up repeatedly at, at all times. So Kelly, pending approval tonight, what is your kind of this issue? What's that timeline look like?
I'll need to get in touch with the financial, if I can get the schedule.
Okay.
And then there's also the fact that we point out funding until July 3rd.
Okay. Okay.
I'm not sure if it's willing to.
So it's looking more like an end of summer.
I have to pay them a lot exactly, and it's going to cost a lot.
Okay.
I will keep you posted.
That sounds good. Um, is the board comfortable on voting? Well, let me ask you, do you want a comprehensive vote or are you able to move forward?
Most of the signs without the museum determined. That's up to you entirely, but you can start on five of the signs.
I would say, I would amend the motion to approve all pending verification of ownership of that site.
Are you in a change of view on social?
Yeah. Because since the funding won't be available, then she'll have the funding, it should be approved it. Then you don't have to back here. Go you. Okay. Any other questions for Kelly? Alright, done motion? Ms. Canfield would like to step with that.
I see. That's pretty good. I will move that the Select Board approve the beach sign locations as presented by the Beach Commission in this meeting. And authorize the installation as close to possible to the locations as presented. We're pending approval of the Museum Beach ownership clarification.
Very good. Second. Moved by Ms. Canfield, second by Mrs. Conley. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Moving and talking to Kelly about the sand beach, Jim.
Uh, he's a jar, right?
Okay.
Thanks for being.
Thanks, Kelly, have a great day, have a great evening. Alright, thanks on our agenda. We have Bob DiLorenzo and Bruce Arvines, our Chair from our Water Resources Committee, to talk about desalinization opportunities. I know this is a topic that's near and dear to Mr. DiLorenzo's heart.
That's right.
He's been seeking it out for years, so it's neat to have you in front of us to hear more about it.
I'd like to mention it for your, she'll lay low from the Water Resource Commission, he's gonna join us.
Thank you for your time. I'd like to start also by thanking Jim for the time he gave us about a month ago to go through this concept of den, as well as Bruce and Freya for their support of the New Water Resource Commission for this, for this concept. So my, my reason coming before you, as Laura said, is really twofold. It's really to, to understand this whole concept and prospect of using desalinated ocean water as another water resource for the town. And secondly, to ask for your approval to form a subcommittee under the Water Resources Commission to investigate these prospects and see what we can learn and what we find out. When we look at the current situation in the town, it's the most obvious, there's all the discussion that's taken place around the water resources that we do have. Looking at the water treatment plant and the dialogue that we're going forward with in replacing that. Also, the discussions that are taking place is exploring other wells in the West End and the Dolph Field. It, it started to become obvious in its own mission that when you're looking at the fact that we sit on top of the Atlantic Ocean and most of the research that we've seen and that has been done for our town says in 20 to 30 years, we may have two more feet of it at our doorstep. You start to say, well, how do we live with this or how do we use this to our advantage? And what can we learn about desalinating this ocean water to give us or help augment the current water supply that we do have? So the idea of this subcommittee, and I'd like to thank Karen, just when I first started thinking about this, her counsel to me was, rather than go lone wolf as another committee out there doing work, you're best to operate under the Water Resources Commission. I think that was absolutely the right thing to do, and thank you, Karen, for that.
Yeah, if I, just might jump in for a moment. So Bob reached out to Becky last year, and so Bob came in, made a presentation to the Water Resources Commission. I think some, uh, snowbury might have taken place. We got back with Bob earlier this year and he suggested that we meet with Jim and Kevin, which we did a month ago. They were interested in Jim's suggestion of you coming with you. So that meeting went quite well. So we're all excited about this. We think there's some opportunities when Bob first met with us last year, I did the Google thing. And my seat of the pants, uneducated, new to desalinization technologies, came up with a number of things. So while some of those may be hidden in the back of our minds that. So, while some of us may have in the back of our minds that desalination, hundred million dollar projects, you know, massive things, that's not necessarily the opportunity, certainly not the opportunity we're looking for. We're looking for a new technology, a better implementation, perhaps a current technology. But the good news is there are a lot of opportunities to look at at this point.
So, the opportunity to form a subcommittee under the Water Resources Group. At hot, I've had conversations with about five different individuals that we've listed that have a real good working knowledge of this type of work and this type of technology. Full disclosure, I haven't had any more than a single conversation with one of them. I didn't want to do any of that until we had an official approval to form a committee. And I apologize to them if I misspelled some of the names or mispronounced some of the names, but Eric Sater, who I think attended Water Resources Commission meeting early in the year, who has a great working knowledge of water treatment plants, I think he actually took a tour and has seen some of the work with some of the drawings that's being discussed about the one that we're putting together. Rick Cohen, who is an environmental engineer, who was very, very involved and well-versed in the work that was being done at Hadley Country Club to desalinate the pond that they're using to irrigate the course. That's about a three million gallon pond, and they're desalinating about 144,000 gallons a day. Ben Woncombe, a friend, industrial engineer, it was amazing, we were at a party and I was talking to him about this, and he takes out his phone, and instead of showing me pictures of kids or his house, he starts showing me pictures of desalinating equipment that was the size of a tractor trailer. So, to Bruce's point about this concept of thinking about San Diego and Tampa and big facilities, even the one that may exist in Brockton, which I have not seen, they're as big as suitcases nowadays, or they could be as big as a tractor trailer, depending on what your needs are. John Bowman, who I think most of you know, the former CPC chair, has expressed interest, as well as Mark Fenton, who served on a number of different boards within the town, has expressed a real desire to be involved with this work.
I see a name missing.
Hmm?
I see a name missing. Yeah.
The good news was, I'm very committed to bad news, I'm at least well-versed in all this technology and the people that are on the list. When we look forward the opportunity, desalinated, the desalination market is growing at about 15% a year, and that's defined as the worldwide population that's getting its drinking water from desalination ocean water. The thing that really, most of us are familiar with, you know, we hear about Israel a lot, we hear about Aruba a lot, but we start to hear about markets that probably more represent the size of a town like Situate, again, versus Tampa or San Diego. What Bruce mentioned before, and I mentioned about when you think of these big plants, the technology is changing so quickly that those old barriers of size, cost, power, what do you do with the waste? That's all being starting to get figured out in a very, very, very efficient way. From the former technology, which was really shoving water through a superfine cheesecloth, this now Teflon membrane, this is reverse osmosis. There's what they use on cruise ships and battleships is steam. So, everybody's coming at this now, because the market's growing, what does that do? It drives technology, it drives competition, and it lowers costs. So, that's really one of the things that we're, you think about the solar market, and what began as big panels, there's now shingles that are generating solar power that you can use for your roof. So, same concept that's happening in solar is now having happening in desalinated water. I included links to three different articles there, the one with MIT was this subject of size and scale. Two gentlemen developed something the size of a briefcase. Literally went down to Carson Beach in South End, sucked some ocean water into it, and a minute later had drinkable water. And they were looking at that as a home solution that they now want to scale up to service towns and cities.
And that was a different technology, that was simply electricity.
It was electricity.
Going on a polar, using a different polar access, I guess, to the water and pulling components out.
The second article from Purdue was really one that was talking about how all this technology is getting much better in addressing those issues of waste and power consumption and size. And the last one that came out of Texas A&amp;M is really about, this technology has no choice but to go forward, because everybody's recognizing the scarcity of water. So, now what do you do about it? Well, you have to find other resources, and that's what leading people to further investigate desalination. I think the other opportunity within forming this group is to understand what's going on in Brockton. There is a plant down there, it's not online, Brockton now owns it, as I understand. Freya has mentioned something which I thought was, which was also another way to think about this, was that something like that start to offer a regional solution? Because it's not just us that's going to suffer, or has been suffering from this problem. It's going to be other towns on the South Shore. So, does that plant start to become a regional solution to augment the existing water supplies that exist in a lot of the towns on the South Shore? And lastly, to further understand what they really did, it had a, they sort of backed into it, they dug a pond to irrigate. The pond became brackish, they had to go down and figure out how to desalinate, get the water out of it. It's working very effectively now, and I've had a number of different offers to take me down there to look at it. So, I think with the market, with the technology improvements, with the things that are happening here in our own backyard with Brockton, and certainly with Hadley, there's a lot of learning out there that may be applicable to helping us in augmenting our existing water supply. We're obviously a good community to do this, the ocean is right there, which also addresses some of the concerns that people had in the past about where does the waste product go, the salt can be pulled out, where does all that go? A lot of it goes right back into the ocean. We also have access to some great rainwater, right across the river in MIT is people working on this all the time, so we have access to rainwater in our location, obviously makes it ideal for us. This sort of becomes an important point for a number of different reasons. Using ourselves as a test case. It is funny when you think about, I was reading an article, and there was a paragraph in the article that said, if you would have told somebody 30 years ago that New England would be experiencing droughts, they would have thought you were crazy. Because New England was always cold, rainy, damp, it was the whole gosh, the fisherman thing. And now here we are, going through how many years of water restriction, a very, very dry summer last year. We can become a test case for coastal communities all across the country to, how do you take those things that are traditionally now and used to deliver desalinated water to three and four million people? How do you scale that down to make it more effective for towns like us? The other concept of that is creating something, depending on where the technology leads us, to say, if it's augmenting supply, we have an infinite resource in the ocean, and maybe able to tap into it with technology as needed. So, not necessarily running hundreds and thousands of gallons a day, but something that would give us a variable flow of water from day to day based on our needs and depending on the rainfall.
Right, and the variability is really important, obviously, familiar with peak periods in summertime. One of the issues that water department faces is, you know, the pressure in the wells goes down. So, their ability to pump out at max capacity is limited, and typically maybe a third low during peak period. So, if there's an ability to ramp up a desalination option and ramp it down when you don't need it later in the year, that would be attractive as well.
The other, the last part of using this as a test case is really, this is the one where you're really betting on the come. We're all citizens, we, we know, I know the town administrator, I know the board, from my past experiences, are very, very diligent in how they spend taxpayer money, and we do projects that we need to be done as we are doing with the water treatment plant. Something like this, depending on cost, to me, the real sell is going back to our state reps, our federal representatives, and saying, look, you can, as politicians, you can talk about climate change, you can talk about water, you can talk about all of it, but wouldn't you want to be able to stand up in front of your constituents and say, my district, my state, is actually working on ways to utilize rising oceans, to utilize water to address the scarcity of water problem, and here's what we're doing? It becomes a fact-based platform for somebody to use, which if they do, is really what we would hope, is access to state or federal funding to help us create this test model for other towns along the coast. It becomes a lot more palatable when you say you're going to take all this learning and then you can share it across the country. It makes it a lot easier to get money that way, as if you say, we're doing this for Situate, for Situate alone. So, it also led me to a quick story when, last Heritage Days, I go to St. Mary's in the Tivity Church, and we had a booth next to Senator O'Connor, and he wasn't there at the time, but I was talking to Mike Murphy, his assistant, and I said, I'd like to talk to you about ocean water, and he went, oh, I think he thought I was going to be talking about seawalls as a number. We started talking about this concept, and we had a really terrific discussion, and ended with him saying, I think Senator O'Connor would be really interested in talking more about this. So, depending on our last slide of the day, what we'd like is for you to officially sanction this subcommittee under the Water Resource Commission. Sanctioning it or approving it would also require your commitment to let us know if you have any access or contacts that you think would be helpful as we go down this path. And also to make you fully aware that one of the first phone calls I may make is to Senator O'Connor, and say, let me, let's talk about something that we're going to be doing in Situate, and hopefully through that get access to what's going on in Brockton and learn a bit more about that. That's pretty much our request for tonight. I'd be happy for myself or Bruce or Freya to take any questions about what we've talked about, or your thoughts, or hopefully your vote to approve.
Well, thank you. Very comprehensive, this book, no doubt. In any of your initial research, did any insight to the level of regulation in our state feel?
Challenging.
Yeah.
Challenging, in talking to, I think it was Rip, he said, the big hurdles in a lot of this, and I think you're probably more familiar with it, with what, I think during the period when we were, there was a golf committee working on Widow's Walk, I think, I think there was some discussion about using gray water to irrigate Widow's Walk, and that was a challenge. I think anytime that you get involved in any of these discussions, whether it's the EPA or the regulatory part is always the most challenging. And again, I think that's where our local and state representatives help us jump through those hurdles, especially if you're saying this is a test, let's give some support and get us what we need to find out what we can learn.
Well, I think it's a great idea. Questions? Susan, any? Amy?
That may answer, I mean, it's already that possible, and I love how realistic we're being if we're talking about what we can do, what we possibly can't do, if it's things like pouring water to the reservoir, it's not totally drunk, but whatever the different solutions can be, I love the fact that we're talking about maybe not just a larger one, but the different possibilities and being realistic about it. So, I'm always cautiously optimistic about the new technology, what we can do, and options are, as long as we go into that kind of sphere, I think it should be worth it.
Yeah, thank you guys for the homework on us and presenting this. I liked, I think it was very good advice to have it as a subcommittee, because the breadth of experience on Water Resources definitely perform this work. So, so that, I think, makes a lot of sense. One thing I was interested, I know you're focused on desalination and that, but there is also, there are other alternative sources, like the water coming out of wastewater, I'd almost want to have a subcommittee that looked at alternative sources as a general concept, because I think you'll probably stumble along this stuff, it's, you know, you know we produce unbelievable quality coming out of that plant, and I don't, I honestly have no idea where the scientific conversation is about that, but I almost want to just put that, I mean, obviously this is your focus, and I think this is a great way to run it, and I really like the idea of raising our hands to be the test for coastal resilience here. And this is a piece of that, like Andrew said, I mean, there are so many things that are being floated out there, because the whole country is dealing with this along the beach coast, that if we can position ourselves as a community that says, hey, you want to try it out here, let's talk. I think that will serve our community as well, get the funding, as we said, and address a lot of problems. So, that's sort of the macro, if you guys want to leave the charge on open that private kind of door, I think that's possible. But I don't know what you guys think about, you know, I don't think it's up, it's a subcommittee, I don't think it's up to us to write the charge per se, but I would definitely advise you to kind of keep up your ears and eyes open to other kinds of opportunities that are outside of things like that.
Yes.
Well, the only comment I would have is that, you know, we're talking about, we don't have enough water. We have too much water. The problem is, we have too much the worm kind and none of the bright kind in terms of human beings and life on the planet. But my hope would be is that, you know, as I'm looking at, what do we do about the fact that Cold Parkway floods on a regular basis? We're about to put an RPO to try to get some engineers to tell us what's possible, what's not possible, what, you know, alternatives would be, on top of that, how much is it going to cost? Because the fear I have is that particular question, the cost is weighted on what we have the needs for. But if there was some ingenious way of being able to use the water that floods Cold Parkway occasionally, and, you know, I'm old enough to remember when computer maniframs were rooms and rooms and rooms and buildings, and now it's on your phone. So, I think this is a great thing to do, and I'm very interested to know what's going on with Brockton as well, because clearly it's not operating, it's not operating for reason, and I suspect it's probably financial, technical, whatever. And what state is that in at this point? And is it actually just completely outmoded, it's probably a fairly sizable operation for us. But I think this is a great idea, and I'm glad after that conversation we had, as Bob, this is where you go. And that you kept at it, which is not always easy, but the Water Resources Committee is a very innovative committee, and they're, you know, really interested in helping the town, so I think this is great, 100% behind it.
Anything to add, Susan?
I agree, this is awesome, so, about this. I agree on the alternative sources, and I also, and I think you mentioned like potable water and groundwater, looking at both, as well as size, like, maybe you don't solve all of our problems, but maybe you solve a few of your last problems, or the vulnerable problems.
Right, another topic that we're looking at in the Water Resources Commission is water catchment also.
Right, right.
About to dash over to the elementary school meeting at Santa that, that's one I think we've asserted there, that if you build a new elementary school or if you expand one, we need catchment.
Right.
I think one of the things with the desalination is that every single one of our groundwater wells is at risk for saltwater intrusion. And so, even if it's not completely saltwater, what do we do with this now brackish water that we have because of desalination?
And that was, that was the Hadley, what Hadley found out.
Yeah. Okay. Well, it sounds like you have the support of the board unanimously. I don't think we have to take an official vote, but as far as an expected procedure as a subcommittee, I think it would fall probably, and correct me if I'm wrong, the Water Resources Committee to create a charge for the subcommittee to put out, even though you have identified folks that are interested, you may, I think, you need to put out the call as well, which you may find there are more folks that may be interested as well in this.
They'll still have to do minutes, and agenda is just like any other board committee, even though they're a subcommittee.
Right.
Right.
Mark, can we restrict that to people who have related expertise or knowledge?
Yeah, you can put, you put definitions into the expertise that you want of that, absolutely. We did that with the Coastal Advisory Commission, we made it very specific as to the representation that you wanted on there.
Okay.
Andrew, did you have a question?
Oh, yeah. All right.
Okay. Anything else? Jeff, anything?
No, we had a long meeting on this, like Koshna, DEP, EPA, don't like words like new, verging when it comes to drinking water. So, what Hadley's doing is not drinking water, it's water golfers, it's a whole, whole different hurdle, and I just wanted them to be prepared for that, because.
But think of all the uses, right? It's watering all the islands, it's, you know, watering the fields, you know, if it's, take that step first, if the regulatory and payment issues are, you know, are in, and it's too high for a principal, so.
I also did want to mention at that tribe meeting with Jim and Kevin, Kevin offered to get us into the, it's actually indicting, the Brockton desalination plant is physically indicted, and it's taking water out of arrogance of bay or creative territory. So, he's made that offer, and we can get, we have contacted Brockton, we'll talk to them over there through the mayor's office.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward, we look forward to hearing your update on the committee forums, and then get you guys back in here to report on your progress.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's a good idea. All right, next on our agenda is a discussion vote for an outdoor entertainment permit for a Situate farmer's market. Did you want to come forward? All right, this evening.
How are you?
I'm great, if you could just for the record, state the name and address.
Kelly Sherman, 43 favor.
Holly Murr, 650, chief justice fishing.
Okay, great. And so you folks are here for an outdoor entertainment permit to eat Mister Row Farm, 3A. And this is for the farmers market? Can you clarify what that, what this is for?
Yes. So it's for, the first one's for Bunny Wedding, that's going to open for the farmers market or be an event that leads into the farmers market. But the farmers market we were going to do on the last four Fridays, June, July, and August, September. So Bunny Wedding was something for the kids, some farm in the community. It was canceled.
Oh, you're saying Bunny Way?
Yes, we really are.
They don't bother regardless of whether they're married or not.
And it was supposed to be at the Norstich Wood Fall Festival that got raided down. So everybody's been, you know, we spent a lot of money making the veil, so all the kids are all excited about it, so we already we worked together as a committee, a bunch of moms, and we want to continue, we want to just do, do that on June 10th and then have the Cituit Farmers Market for only four dates for this year.
Okay. And is that the only location where the farmers market will be operating?
Yeah, from, from what I understand, yeah. So I met with Carla, me, who was running the farmers market for the last few years here, and she didn't want to continue to do it or couldn't fit it into her schedule. So the idea was to see if anybody else wanted to step forward, and she and I had been talking last year, so I was like, how about we try it on a real farm across the street from where you, you were, and see if it works. So we didn't really coordinate till recently, so that's why we're just going to do it for four, four times for this year.
And
If it's successful, then we're hoping we can come back to try to do it weekly, the way it was.
And where will parking be?
So we have a big, big parking area, and when you pull in the driveway past the water resource area that we have, because we have it all delineated, there's a farm room that goes up to the back of the property that we have parking. Like on woodchips.
Yep.
Yep.
And so you're looking for the outdoor entertainment permit, are you planning to have live band, DJ, or acoustic from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m.?
Yes. Birch Work Band is, and the Wildflower Dubs are scheduled to play right now.
That's just
So local band, and then if he can't do it one time, we're, we're going to do Whoever Shows Up, which is another local band. And Jean did talk to the cops, she's on our committee for the Cituit Farmers Market with Carla, she's going to stay on the committee. We're going to hope, hope that the committee grows and get more people involved, so it's not just like one or two people running the farmers market, so we can decide if it works and then continue with next year. So it's kind of a trial run.
And then have you already notified the bunnies of your plans?
Yep, sent a letter out to all of them on Friday.
Okay, on Friday, so probably just getting Okay, before I go, is there any bunnies here? Any questions from the board?
Just have one question about if there's signage on 3A now?
We are just actually putting a sign up for the farm.
Yeah.
And then we would, we were thinking of making well, first Carla has banners on the Cituit Farmers Market, so we're going to fix those and put the four gates on there. And then we were going to hang it somewhere like along the highway, we'll, we'll just have to figure it out, but then we could do street signs, possibly lawn signs. But there will be a sign for the farm on the highway.
And how many parking spaces are there?
I'd say there's parking for at least 60 cars.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it goes up back, and there's a bunch of woodchips that go when you pull in, you have to pull in really far before you make a right turn, and then there's a big parking area that's there. And we talked to the police, and they are going to monitor us and stop by on the first day, and they will then just we'll, we'll keep an eye on it, and then if they feel that we need police detail, they're going to, we're going to keep in constant communication with them to make sure we hire, hire them if we're finding that there's a lot of traffic. But we're not sure how it's going to go.
And on otherwise marketing, we're going to kind of give them a look at.
Yes, we're going to, we just took over the Facebook page from Carla. We haven't done anything with that yet, and then Instagram, yeah, we're not sure, yeah, maybe try to get it, and we're, so the goal is to get community groups to come and set up at the farmers market too, so that it's kind of more of a community gathering rather than just a farmers market of sorts. So it's trying to make it a free, open community event that is going to sell some good local produce and help local vendors, I guess is what they call them, is, so Jean's going to help us, she's on our committee. She helps around the heritage days, and she at the indoor farmers market over at the church, so she's got vendors, Carla has vendors. We're going to try to work with all the local businesses that we kept.
Great.
Ms. Kelly? I, I actually did go on the Facebook page, it's very informative, and I suggest that people take a look at it because I knew there was something going on over there for the past couple of years in terms of ax throwing and some entertainment, and so I was sort of curious as to what was going on, but it's clear that, you know, you're trying to build this farm into something that's sort of a community asset, which is a great idea. I just have a question, Jeff, are there rules related to signage on permanent signage or temporary signage on the state highway?
Well, it's with the state.
Okay. And is that act caused by some reef? Uh, yep.
Yeah, the state, yeah, it's kind of a lot of process.
So they may have to do for this year temporary signs, put them up, take them down?
Probably, because they got to talk to District 5, but the state is calational.
Yeah. So I think you're going to need to factor that in, because I don't know if anyone else knows exactly where that address is, I looked at it, and it looks like it's across the street over that way, it looks like it's before this snowmobile station, so I'm just, I'm personally trying to figure out where it is, and once you start to generate traffic, that's going to be an issue, but, you know, I think if you plan on having temporary signs versus staking out permanent signs, even if it was the summer season, you may not want to follow the state until you get that process underway, but
Okay.
I, I think it's a great idea. I hope it works.
Yes.
How many bunnies are getting married? Two couples?
Two bunnies are getting married.
Oh, just two bunnies, sorry.
Two couples, sorry, two couples.
Two couples, okay, just curious.
I forgot their, well, Biyo and, yeah, Big Bingo and, yeah.
I've heard of dog weddings, but now it's bunny weddings.
Well, we had a goat wedding like
Oh, okay.
2015, had over 200 people.
Are they still together?
Yeah, they, no, that's a long story.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
No, I was just curious if they, if they let her, sorry.
I'll poke off to yours. Susan?
I'm trying to look to see, it's hard to see, but, yeah.
Um, sorry, in the audience, who has any comments or concerns? Yes?
Uh, Boyne Womallin, 27th, Fesen Hill, Brad. What's being done to mitigate the noise? Because some of the activities in there for the neighbors and the bunnies really lays into the quality of our life and how late at night will they be going? You're talking 60 cars parked on that lot from vendors. Police detail should be minimum, I mean, that's a curb cut driveway on Major State Highway. What's being done for the neighbors though? Because our quality of life has been affected with some of this that's gone on over the last couple of years.
So the hours here are 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., so it's just the 8:00 p.m. bill. And is that the entire duration of the farmers market, or is that just for us for entertainment?
Uh, for both.
Okay, so
So I think that our team was going to end around 7:30.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And we can, we can amend that then to be 7:30. I do share the same concern about traffic, but as long as you're working with the police and they're on top of it from week to week, uncomfortable with them, I mean, that's their area of expertise, but I, I do share that concern as well, because
Yeah, no, I, we're the ones that brought it up with Lorraine and were also concerned, because we're, we're going to hire them if we're finding we're very busy or it's popular, yeah.
And this is really only June 10th, Friday, June 30th, July 28th, August 25th, and September 29th, so it's not every, every weekend either. Okay. Yes, we're in Keys 57, Fesen Hill. I guess there's a piece of it that feels like we're already partially down the slippery slope. There, this wicked ax growing, I don't know why we never were notified about that with sound, and those parties went until 11:00 is typically when the music would go off and later, and that was a weekly thing, and we were never notified. The farm itself, which, when the kid thing was open, there were no 60 parking spaces, and if you say you have 60 now, that's probably true because more and more trees have been cut down on the property, and because more trees are cut down, now the noise from 3A, noise and lights, now lights come into our windows, which we never had before. And I also think that this farm is totally encroached, and I would really be curious if the town is aware how close to our property lines on Fesen Hill the animals grow. And if the animals are there, are the guests at this next event going to be there? And I don't know how you, this is rush hour traffic, people are going to be crossing the road there, because there's not going to be enough parking where people are going to say, I'll just scoot across. That's, that's an issue, but the and I guess I saw that there was going to be a brewery, so is there going to be a liquor license needed? And they're allowed to bring picnic baskets, so that could be inviting more liquor and more drunk drivers coming out of there. So I think right now it's only entertainment, it's not
The next item on the agenda is a one day
There's boats, it's a one day winter, or a matchup?
But I guess a question, we were never notified about the wicked ax, and we just received the letter just today, which didn't give residents enough time to necessarily show up. But the noise is an issue, and if it was just five nights in the whole year, fine, but that's not the case. That's not the case at all. And so when there's regular bands there, are we supposed to be notified? Yes, I don't, I'm, I've been told that I don't think they were really aware of the outdoor entertainment permitting process previously, but now they are. So that's why they're here before us tonight, they've never been before us.
So you don't mind about wicked ax throwing?
And you never
We were, we were in friendly before.
I don't remember the wicked ax throwing personally, but that's just my
You're right.
I don't promote it out.
You're right. No, I remember seeing ads for it and saying to myself, what?
I don't, I don't recall it at all.
And then I would ask the rain, no one can come in for any sort of license that way.
So now they're, they're trying to do the right thing.
Exactly.
And coming for the license and the photo, which is great, but I think you're hearing some concerns.
Yep.
I can't really speak to the property lines, I don't know them, but I would imagine that you're really
Baby, I remember a roll officer has been over multiple times to check, and we're
Has, has watershed been tested because of the runoff that goes right into the stream that goes into our watershed? Has watershed ever been?
Not to my knowledge.
Are there going to be portage ons at this festivity that's going on?
Yep, two of them. And we're going to keep them there all summer, like kind of hidden, or hidden, I guess, or in my spot, so it's not ugly for us, but I have a
We've got ugly, don't worry.
Yep. Yes.
That was, just for clarification, so your property is permitted as an agricultural property.
Yes.
So those are, and that's what the don't allow.
Yes, that's
So my question, and probably for, for Jim, is are there, are any of the proposed activities contrary to that use?
Not if they're in relation to a farmer's farm. Kind of just kind of ax throwing that has nothing to do with the farm, and that would be a soggy violation, which I thought we're going to, but having events that are directly related to agricultural use, those would be allowed.
Anything working before?
For what purpose?
Like many years ago.
But not for the ax throwing?
No, for graduation party, for police detail, for my bunnies' graduation award.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, so what I'm hearing is you, you do have another step that you should probably pursue on the ax throwing, because it's not a permitted use under your you know, under your, your property. For the water, downstream water, our water's tested all the time, all places, so if there was something that was coming into the water stream, I think it would have been alerted to, you know, you don't, we don't go out to specific sites unless, you know, something pops up, so hopefully that, that helps on that piece of it. I do, I'm a little concerned that if everyone just got their notices yesterday, and then want to start, I mean, today, yeah.
Today.
Today.
Yeah, your first is the end of June, I, I, Madam Chair, would be, I would like to give the bunnies a little more time to respond to this request, because you do allow residential. So I think it's within your, I think bands are not exactly agricultural. I do like, I think you're right, I think it's a, it's an exciting opportunity for the community, I love the concept, I love the, what we're trying to do, but we know from this town that when we're producing something, maybe sometimes we just take it a slow to make sure people have a chance to come out and see what they need to say. That's kind of where I'm at.
So the ax throwing in this stage are not on the farm property, they're on my property that's been they do, but they, I pay tax on that piece of the property. So it's not agricultural, really, it's it's like right next to my house, and, and there was just an ax throwing wall, we don't have to have ax throwing that day at all. It's fine.
It sounds like, it sounds like you probably should.
Yeah.
Any day.
One moment, Mrs. Collins, did you have?
No, I, I just, I'm questioning the issue of the animal, the runoff from the animals. And if there is a concern in terms of the creeps or whatever, I'm sure there are some relations related to farms and farming that would, you know, require you to do certain things to make sure that there aren't animal feces running off into neighbor neighbors, you know, wetlands and all that stuff, so.
I was, I'm only here for an outdoor permit for, I'm not here to
Well, this is why you're here.
I know, I, I have a, it's a right to farm community, I don't know how to address all of that, I have only two cows and about 14 baby goats and maybe 14 other mom goats, and then we just took about five pigs to slaughter, and I have 18 pigs left, and they cleared the land, and we're doing it all natural. I don't use any chemicals, I'm allowed to take down my trees, it's my property, I have 17 acres. We respect the boundary, unlike somebody else on Fesen Hill who dumped on my property quite a bit. So I didn't press charges or get upset, and we just let it go, but we asked to clean it up. So yeah, it's a right to know, I, I understand that the cows annoy them. We're moving the cows to Norwell for the summer to go on pasture, because I, we live in the woods and I'm just growing our first pasture. So that's why we took down some trees, so we could have a garden. So yeah, we're trying, and the, the cows are not in the watershed area, but we only have two of them, and we compost have a tractor that we pull out all the manure, and we have a compost pile that we, we actually volunteer the situat plants down, sell compost or give compost away to the garden club members.
Okay, thank you.
Would I, I.
But the animal control officer, uh, Keith is, comes over to check uh, regularly, so he's there, like I'd say twice a year.
He's a works.
Mm-hmm.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, my thoughts. I sense there's more tension beyond this, I'm trying to look at. We're trying to do a farm program, it's an agricultural space. As you said, you have to have trees, I can cut down trees on my property, not violate any, any laws that my neighbors can or may have. Um, but also being good neighbors, make sure that noise, that we're able to talk to each other, make sure that we can't regulate that from up here, I wish we could, I wish, I wish the noise, like for everything that we can do.
Yeah, I understand.
Uh, and I don't, again, I don't know about the axe throwing.
Well, I, I think there were a lot of complaints about the roosters, I've gotten rid of them, there's one now. And then the cows were moved, uh, they were along the property line, um, because it's flat up there. So, and then we try to respect the water resource boundary, that we had that whole property delineated for wetlands. So I follow that with Greg Morse, so I just have to follow those guidelines. Um, and then the cows, like I said, I've been trying to sell them and find a new home for them, so we just so I volunteered at the Norwell branch, met a nice guy who's gonna take the cows for the summer. But the cows are now closer to the highway, and yes, they can be loud, especially if they're in heat.
Anything else?
No, it's, again, it's trying, I, I have sympathy, I mean, dry started, because I have sympathy. Make sure people have a comfortable home, and then we can, you know, make sure that you're not, it's not too loud, everything that's there, you can understand. Um, so it's bigger than just, for me, than just these five dates, it's almost, I mean, personally, I, I I'm okay with once we understand that the axe throwing, that will issue moving forward. But I do wish we could find a way uh, to make sure these other concerns.
Well, there's a few other residents that have a.
Tell me, we'll, we'll see if anybody else has to.
Do you know what I mean, so I'm just, I'm trying to find the uh, sort of type, try to catch in place.
Just, we've gone like we're partway down the slope, but isn't, it's like, we're already been putting up with a lot. And this is just one more on the heat, that's all.
Yeah.
Susan, anything additional?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I agree to, I mean, that's the point I'm coming to this, to get the permit here and not, so that we can somehow mitigate. Um, and it's a um, a band that goes till eight o'clock and not axe throwing until eleven o'clock, so um, we're following the process and hopefully we can listen to other folks who have come to get to, to mitigate this. So that, so that, you know, we can, there can be a farm, it's a two hit, but um, we can also have residential area too. So there's a little give and take right next, next door farms and residences.
Does everybody else in the audience um, have a question? So, somebody's pointing at somebody. Just your name and address, please.
Uh, James Newman, sixty two Fesen Hill Drive, um, I think he had, he had a nail in the head, I think it's, um, it's been growing for a long time. It's just been kind of frustration, and so I think this is just kind of the, the biggest point, um, I think, you know, me personally, if, if this was just like you said, forty five days, and it was from four to eight, totally okay with that, but in the past, it's been, it's been late nights. Um, you know, there is, there's a lot of clearing going on back there, and I guess the question I would have is, where it's been cleared, is that what the parking area is gonna be? There's, that's, you know, there's a lot of vehicles that would be coming right into, one's our backyard in a sense. Um, the other thing, you know, and it just kind of goes beyond it, but there's, you know, there's been, there's been fire. Um, so there's smoke, which is always a concern, because you don't know how the, the fire's controlled, it's not controlled. Um, to the point where there's been a fire back at one point, I walked back, there was nobody attending it, there was just a live fire. Uh, cause I was out of concern that mostly it was back there, so it was not that much. Um, but I think that's the biggest thing, right, is that I think it's just been, this this thing's been growing, 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 I think that's where there's a lot of tension on the backside of the street. Uh, and, and I think like I said, the, definitely the axe throwing, I think, was a lot, and there was a lot of, eleven o'clock midnight, and and you guys know sound carries, and it was, you know, I got kid room, I got kids bedrooms on the backside of the house. Um, what would kids up, it's not, it's not a great thing, um, so, like, I think that's where I'll come to it.
No, thank you, I mean, I think it's all, it's all great and important, great insight to an issue that really hasn't been a lot reported in the world. Um, so we appreciate it. Um, I would say, uh, Conley, are you willing to commit not to do any axe throwing, or that will require some sort of a permit as well? Um, so this entertainment permit is um, just strictly for music. Acoustical, I'm also thinking that, you know, maybe um, we don't allow a live band, that sounds, I wonder, you said you had a live band booked, right? I'm just thinking of the noise and the carrying.
Oh, you can add a good sound, you know.
And I.
I'm on a butter for the river, okay, what's your, there's live bands all the time?
One sec. One sec, Susan, one sec. Um, so, um, are you open to it being seven thirty? You know, for Italians, it sounds like the heat, you know, the butters have a lot of concerns about the noise that's going going later to the night. Um, as you just said, you have your own right to um, do what you need to do on your property, with your trees, unfortunately, a lot of trees have fallen down even on their own. If you drive and see the woods over on the west deck, half of them are down, um, just from climate change, right, so that's fair too, so. Um, I think if we just make sure, I think you try to be a good neighbor, that's why you're here, getting a permit. Um, if you're open to seven thirty, I'm, I'm fine with taking a vote on that. I would say I, I have a week till the next one, and I'm not comfortable with the, uh, alcohol permit. Um, but we'll get to that, that'll be the second conversation we'll discuss it now as well together, but I just think it's a, it's a it's gonna be a challenge on the site anyway, just because of the traffic. Um, count three A from four to seven thirty, we're gonna have to be approved. Um, or I wanna talk about the one day alcohol permit as well, which we're gonna move forward.
Yeah, I think it's powerful, we're talking about the whole, it's all on.
I do.
Yeah.
And I.
If I could just add to that, just so you're aware, so they have a farmer's brewing permit, and the purpose of it is to go to farmers markets.
So they got a what, right, I'm sorry.
They have a farmer brewing, it's a separate uh, group, it's gonna be speaking to you.
Sorry.
A separate person is gonna be speaking to you about the liquor, one day liquor.
Okay.
It's a farmer brewery permit from the ABCC.
Huh.
It's just like Untold is a farmer brewery permit.
Gotcha.
And their whole concept is to, you know, brew the alcohol and bring it to sell at farmers markets and places like that. Just so you're aware.
Well, that's very different, thank you.
It's very different than, you know, having somebody come and just.
So it's just to sell, not, not to consume?
They are allowed to taste.
Mm-hmm.
But they're not gonna be serving drinks there, hold on.
Okay, good, thank you.
But you're still unfortunate on that one, huh?
One minute, one minute, guys, keep a little bit of work here. Um, okay, good morning. Um, someone over here, please tell us, sir. Name and address.
Joseph Kreis, fifty eight Fesen Hill Drive, and was directed by her to the farm. That road that they're talking about, that goes up to the top of the backyard, that's me. Make a right, sixty parking places, allegedly sixty, that's me. There's been enough problems with the farm, the noise, the men, the smell, the manure, we've already complained to the board health and zoning. That's in previous years, it continues. This is the notice I got today, unmarked envelope on Farmer's Market overhead, the second paragraph has a blurb about this meeting. Uh, it's really not fair that we receive those.
Okay, thank you.
Well, not done yet. Farmers markets normally close about four or five o'clock. For farmers markets have live entertainment until eight o'clock, is unacceptable. There's been advertising, the different parties, they've had the, 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 the one, along with the axe throwing, it's been advertised on their website. Supposedly to eight o'clock, it continues till nine thirty, ten o'clock, ten thirty and beyond. My neighbors here have been all attest to that, it's not fair. It's bad enough living, constant loud nuisance, cow belling, it's not a moo, it's a bell, goes right through the whole neighborhood. Rick O'Malley down the street, here's him. But then, I mean, I'm almost eighty years old, in the town for forty-four years, we've had a quiet neighborhood until this farm came. Left empty potential to disturb us with an entertainment license against the whole entertainment business. I actually told a note on entertainment business.
Thank you.
Uh, not done yet. This is on behalf of Susan Paul Hughes, they couldn't make it, they wrote this. Please consider Susan Paul Hughes, owners of residence of sixty-five, Fesen Hill Drive, Situa. As a no vote to petition for entertainment with, and they could grow farm, it is all been ridiculous, ridiculous, noisy with the animals. And there have been several instances in the past with loud music, with loud music for that permit. This is from Mark Dowling, who was right next to me, if James, myself, and Mark, director of butters, apologize for not being here, as the consent approval for acres to grow farm, pers- perspective, perspective of events, would firmly oppose. Uh, well, yes, no park can be permitted for event in front of my house as well. And cutting through his yard because there's been other problems before. So you can have these two letters from Mark, this is you, but we're all no votes. It's been nuisance for several years now, nothing stops at the agenda time. So as far as the entertainment license for DJ, no.
Thank you.
David Gilligan, forty-nine, Fesen Hill Drive.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't catch the name.
Did you say the answer?
David Gilligan, forty-nine, Fesen Hill Drive. Pretty much the same thing right here, uh, just the noise, the axe throwing, the noise will go until ten, eleven, twelve, five, it'll start at ten o'clock. You can hear the chatter, once brought out, the music be turned down, you get no response, no response. Then they finally turn it down, then it goes back out. It's an ongoing process, just keeps happening. Uh, also another butter, uh, Hall and Sheila, they're actually out of the contrary spoke of that, they gave it to, you know, just because they have, they're a hard no as well. You can't even go outside and sit down and have a drink and entertain with your kids or have a meal without the banging, the music, so and so forth, it's just, it's been disrupted for years, and it's a sad situation because neighbors are supposed to be good to each other every time. It's just not happening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, no, thank you. Well, this, you know, it's like there's a lot of issues that have happened in the past, um, that need to be rectified, I think, before we move forward, I mean, if we're going to put a farmer's market there, do we need entertainment, you know, can the farmer's market go on a trial basis? You know, it's a trial basis for the farmer's market to even move there. I mean, have our past farmer's markets, Jim had entertainment, I don't, out here, I don't think ever, ever will.
Um, just had a guitarist.
And an amplifier.
Guitarist with an amplifier.
Yeah, that's about it.
Yeah, just one, the person playing the guitar.
Um. I mean, I'll ask, yes, this is Conley.
I, I guess what I'd like to say is I think that tonight we have the opportunity to rectify. We can't rectify tonight at this rate the issue of the animals. There are various, you know, we do have farms in town, farms are allowed to exist, they, they have to operate under certain restrictions, I suppose, if you wanna follow that. But um, I think if, if we're here tonight to prove, is it five, five evenings, yeah, five, from four to eight, and that's it? No, nothing else, they can't do anything else in terms of outdoor entertainment, axe throwing, drinking, et cetera. I think the best opportunity is to have a farmer's market that's very much a community-based thing, that includes children. Um, so, as much as you're upset about the slippery, slippery slope, I think we're kind of here tonight, and it should stop. Again, not in terms of the, what's going on with the animals, animals are animals. Everyone wants to live next to horse farm until they smell the room. Um, everyone wants to have farms in their town until they have farm food. I mean, we've been, we were down this road with a request to become a right to, I think it's a right to farm community. And all of these issues were partway around, and I don't think we ever adopted it, it was supposed to be a bylaw, because it's, it's, it's more contentious than people think. But if tonight we're agreed that we're permitting them to have five farmer's markets between four and now it's seven thirty, with, we can restrict the entertainment to guitars, I think they, that's similar in what they do with the coacid farmer's market, they have gentle they're not rock bands, they're not, you know, trying to whip up a crowd, so I would be inclined to say if, if we can encourage this business, I guess is what you wanna call it, under these restrictions, I think it would be better for you as neighbors, and now that we know it's going on. I, I'm sorry you didn't come here three years ago, whenever it was starting.
We did, we were told to go to zoning.
That's okay, uh.
And they told us, zoning, zoning told us to go to animal control. And we wrote letters to the board of spokesman, I've, I've got copies in, I'll share with you.
We've got.
But if you make this, if you wanted to grant a permit for farmer's market, maybe till five o'clock with no live entertainment, you know, you could probably live with it temporarily.
But can I clarify, so um, if it's farmer's market, this is not a drinking event, this is a just tasting. Because I, I don't want a drinking, because then I'm drinking leads to noise, and we're, we're used to, we know what that sounds like. So a tasting is different from a drinking event.
Correct, and that's, that's the next item on the agenda, this is Keys, so we'll, we'll take that up in a moment and clarify that.
Okay.
Yeah, one more, a little bit of.
I just want to, well, so the, the flyer that I got, you can see that it says D Y O B, but it's crossed out, so that would be the other clarification.
Yeah, we should care about.
Correct, I just wanted to make sure.
I mean, Conley corrected, that was a mistake.
Correct, that was the one.
So I, okay, I think, I think we've, we've heard a lot, and thank you for all your feedback, because um, in all honesty, I'm not aware of complaints by business owners with regards to the farm, so, um, I think Mrs. Conley brings up a great point, um, that Mrs. Burke is here, she has every right to farm there, but she's here now understanding the protocol procedures, and it's for five nights. So if the board is amenable to considering a shorter timeframe um, for the entertainment permit, it's an opportunity to try to get our farmer's market in Situa to thrive. It's a better challenge, um, so if this is where the farmer's market folks and, and, and US partners are looking to you know, bring that together, I think it deserves an opportunity. Um, I would recommend it being, you know, seven thirty the latest, and I don't know if the board thinks otherwise on the entertainment. I also agree that it should probably would be reduced to acoustic, because sound travels and, you know, that, you know, people are eating cookouts and whatnot in their families, so it's just acoustic, that's much less invasive than a live band on in my mind, um, so I would um, suggest that as well to the board for your consideration. Um, and um, no, one moment please, um, so that's where I'm at right now, you know, just to, you know, you give this an opportunity. You're coming in to try to do this in the right manner, which we appreciate. Um, and if you can really hear about the axe throwing in the late at night and, and be a, a good neighbor, I think that would be really appreciated as well.
Chair, I don't know if this would be appropriate or not, or if it'd be possible to consider maybe just, maybe two, the first two to see how those go prior to doing the others. Come back and say these one very well, no, I think that's not appropriate, bro.
Okay, um, I think it takes a lot of work to put together a farmer's market, and so I feel as though five nights is not extraordinary. Um, and, you know, they get canceled a couple of times because of weather, you never know, but I feel so to expect people to sign up to be in a farmer's market and say, well, we're gonna get to try for two nights and then, and we may cancel it, we may not, so, um, and I, you know, I, I have to say, I do think that it would be better to have a police detail there the first time. Rather than waiting to see if something happens, because it's, it's, we all know it's a terrible street, and it's, it's right near the cause of many accidents, so I would want it to the first time to have police detail all. So I would want it to, the first time, to have police detail, all of the parameters completely worked out. And, um, and hopefully we won't be up there saying violating something when we went after hours or whatever. So, okay.
Um, all right, I know you had your hand raised. One more moment, but that, I think the board's.
No, I just wanted to ask, you know, not so much farmer's market, Chris, the time after, the weekends after, music and everything else.
She wouldn't have to come in for an entertainment permit for any of that.
Okay.
So she's doing the proper thing, coming in for an entertainment permit for these five nights with the times and anything else, she cannot have outdoor music.
Outdoor, okay, thank you.
Okay, okay.
Inherent ability to issue a license is also to be going to be revoked.
To revoke it, right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Um, do I have a motion that, um, the board is going to amend or, or make?
Um, move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to Acres to Grow Farm at six fifty-five Chief Justice Bushing Highway for Saturday, June tenth, Fridays, June thirtieth, July twenty-eighth, August twenty-fifth, and September twenty-ninth for acoustic instruments from four P M to seven thirty P M, pending a letter notification, which we know is in progress happening, but it still needs to be, you know, more time.
Motion by Mrs. Connelly. Second by Mr. Goodrich. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, so four to seven thirty, acoustic only. And, um, I agree with Mrs. Connelly. Let's make sure that police detail is there on night one because it is a dangerous. Which is, um, and I want to thank all the voters for coming in for your feedback. Um, and we will monitor it and ensure that everything goes along according to our time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
So somebody else, yeah. So next actually that goes along with this is the one day, uh, fine law license for the farmer brewery. Is there, okay, okay, so.
What's wrong?
All right.
That's you?
Yeah, that's me.
So we're, I'm a private super, so we're just looking for a.
I'm sorry.
So I'm a private super, I've got a share.
Okay.
Um, so I'm just looking for a one day license to share my ear.
And just tell, tell us a little bit more about the process, the tasting, what, you know, how that works.
So you're tip certified. I will be checking IDs and I will have a unique stamp that I can use. Um, and, you know, we incorporate the can, so they're just small taste and they can, you know.
So they taste it, they choose whether or not they like it, they buy it, they take it off the boxes.
Yeah. Yep, consume off, off grams.
Yeah. And you are tip certified and will be anybody else, uh, working with you, I'll just do it. Okay. Interesting.
We have a copy of your tip certification.
I have it, okay, yep. It's all backup. And then, um, additional, is there anywhere else that you do this, any other form of?
Oh yeah, so you gotta hang on, um, there's a hauler in the hole for like six weeks over the summer. Um, I'm a permanent there. So, we do it all over.
And you don't complain.
So you're just gonna hang on, don't complain.
Uh, any questions, additional questions, Mrs. Connelly? If this is simply tasting, do you have just one brew that you do, or you do like five or six, or I don't know, how many you do?
Um, we can, whatever we have made, um, we just select a few, like flavors.
Okay.
So, and one might be a seltzer, one might be an I D A, you know, the water, you know.
So it's not just going up and tasting one, just one brew, it's a number of things.
Yeah, yeah, it's a few, depends on what we have at the brewery.
Because I'd like to suggest that if what you're doing is letting people taste and then buy, that there's some way to, uh, wrap something around the six pack or whatever.
It's only four pack and it comes with a four, a plastic four pack.
Well, what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is.
So they don't.
Yes, I don't want, I, I think we do not want people, if it's meant to be a tasting, we don't want them to be running over to the corner and hoping that, well, I know, what, what if you're doing, right?
It's a good point, yeah.
So if there's some way to identify as it's, to do some mark on it and then maybe to transport it to the, somewhere where someone can pick it up as they're on their way up, rather than letting them walk around with it. I, I think it just would, the temptation for many people would be too great not to pop open a couple of whatever. So we're not trying to be killjoyous here, but, um, you know, we do have to take these things into consideration. So that would be my suggestion.
Anything additional?
I think the timing could be the same for eight because that's the length of the entire farmer's market, correct?
Four to seven thirty.
Right. Well, we did four to seven thirty just for your, your music. I mean, you'll want eight for the rest of the farmer's market, correct?
Yeah, four to seven thirty is fine too, though.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sorry.
They're gonna get the ice cream down.
Yeah, we have known as ice creams coming at six and seven thirty to end, uh, for the farmer's market, so it's kind of five to end at seven thirty.
Okay, okay, all right. Do I have a motion or any additional questions? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve a one day fine amount license for vitamins C growing for the farmer's market at the Acres to Grow Farm on Saturday, June tenth, Fridays, June thirtieth, July twenty-eighth, August twenty-fifth, and September twenty-ninth from four to seven thirty P M.
Motion by Mrs. Connelly. Second, second by Mrs. Cantfield. Any additional discussion? See none, all in favor? Aye, aye. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck and, um, forward to a successful event for all. Okay, moving right along. Next on our agenda is, um, special vote for interim loan from the Massleet Water Trust for over your selection. Pam? Are you?
No.
I don't see you.
I see you too. Play some.
Want some money?
Money too.
Boom.
So first is the Clean Water Trust. I did this round, uh, two million three hundred and sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-three loan for the water treatment project. This is with a drinking water part, um, to be approved for that loan, so I just want me to approve it too. Um, this hopefully more common as we get into the project, but this was it so far.
Obviously zero percent?
Yes, and, um, we want more loans like that because as you can see, my next point of business rates are very high to borrow money right now.
Oh, so, Mr. Goodrich?
What was that, that percent again?
I just said.
Well, no, seriously, thank you. No, like, seriously, people need to know foresight, ability. For you, your team, your rest of the, talking about the one, zero percent, that's saving, just one, not to the windows.
Yeah, and just so you know, Jim and Nancy and Kevin and Patrick and myself are pushing for more clean water trust. Yes, this is the way to go with this project.
Thank you. Do you just need a motion, Pam, or do we?
I have a nice one vote for the new question.
That's what I saw. I just wanted to, uh, Susan's attention once we.
Welcome aboard.
Once you take a vote, um, it's the bond one, right?
Yeah, that's the second one.
It's.
No, it's the mass clean water trust one.
Uh, I was going to approve the long term.
No, that's just a motion, a little.
Right, I'm on the time.
It's me kind of.
But you first, Pam.
I was first.
Okay, you got it. Um, well, first let's, um, have a motion. Do I have a motion?
Move that the select board approve a loan from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust in the sum of two million three hundred and eighty-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars for Article five authorized April eleven, two thousand twenty-three, special town.
So, so wait a minute, I, I did a boo-boo. I got six and eight eight. Um, it's actually two million three hundred and sixty-eight. Uh, that's mine, well, as a salary.
Two million three hundred and sixty-eight, seven sixty-three.
Yeah, sorry. That's my listed fingers, sorry.
Motion is amended. Uh, do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Cantfield. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
And just to amend that, I might all agree with you.
Six, thirty-six.
Seven sixty-three.
Seven sixty-three.
Thank you.
Now clerk, would you like?
Do that number and not again.
No, no.
No.
No, it's okay.
I'm the newly elected clerk of the. I'm the clerk of the select board of the town Situate Mass certified that at a meeting of the board on May thirty, twenty twenty-three, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and that at which a form was present, the following vote was passed, all of which appears upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted that the town shall issue a bond or bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed three million five hundred thousand. The bonds pursuant to chapters twenty-nine C and forty-four of the general laws and vote of the town passed on April eleventh, twenty twenty-two, Article five, for planning or construction of drinking water infrastructure, the project. Voted that in anticipation of the issuance of the bonds, the treasurer is authorized to issue an interim loan note or notes, the notes from time to time in an average principal amount not to exceed three months, growth three million five hundred thousand. That each bond or note shall be issued in a single registry, registered security and sold to the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, the, the trust at a price deter, determined pursuant to the financing agreement. Voted that the treasurer is authorized to determine the date, the form, the maximum interest rate, and the principal maturities of each bond and note and to execute a financing agreement or agreements with the trust with respect to the sale of the bonds and notes such date from amaturities, the specific interest rate or rates of the bonds and notes to be approved by majority of the select board and the treasurer and evidenced by their execution of the bonds or notes. Voted that any certificates or documents related to each bond and note collectively, the documents may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as original, all of which shall constitute one of the same document delivery of an executed counterpart of signature page to the document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to the document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto having the same legal effect as original signatures. Voted that all action taken to date by the town and its officers and agents to carry out the project and its financing, including execution of any loan commitment or agreement by the treasurer and hereby ratified, approved, and confirmed, and voted that the treasurer um, and other appropriate town officials are hereby authorized to take any and all actions necessary or convenient to carry out the provisions of this vote, including execution and delivery of the financing agreements and the project regulatory agreements relating to the project. I further certify that the agenda for the meeting, a copy of which attached what heretofore was posted on the bulletin board of the town at least twenty-four hours before the meeting in compliance with section seven dash of the town charter. I further certify that the vote was adopted at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda of the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above vote was filed at the town court. And a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours or in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located or if applicable, in accordance with the alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the attorney general as set forth in nine forty C M R twenty-nine point zero three two B at least forty-eight hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting and remained so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decisions in conjunction with the sale of the bonds or notes were taken in executive session and that the official record of the meeting was made available to the public promptly and remains available to the public all in accordance with, um, general law, section thirty A, section eighteen to twenty-five as amended. I further certify that the vote has not been amended, supplemented, or revoked and remains in effect on this date dated May thirty, twenty twenty-three.
Yes, thank you very much, ma'am clerk. You've got some water because there's another. I know. Okay, so we should be all set with that. We, uh, did the motion and we proved it and, uh, clerk for that, we should be all set.
Okay, now.
Pam, now the next one.
Uh, this is just some cleanup for F Y twenty-three hearing projects that we need to borrow a little bit of money to spend before June thirtieth. So we went out to the market and sold general obligation bond anticipation notes because we didn't want to bond it all yet because we want to see what the market is going to do in December when the widow's law ban also comes out to renew, the, things will also then. Um, so we had, uh, six bidders and we have a four point five coupon interest rate. The town is receiving eighteen thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty cents and for premium to cover the cost of getting this in the market. And then, um, the two results are a net interest cost of three point eight three six oh percent, which is not too bad. Um, so hopefully the market will be better in December and I'm sure it will be, be better back to the market then anyways for more projects.
And just so everyone knows, uh, this covers the I N I on the motion side, um, that's approved in twenty twenty-one. Um, water, some additional water main replacement for special town meeting in twenty twenty-one, three hundred dollars. Additional funds, uh, for the docks, for waterways, for Senator, sixty-five thousand, uh, totally five, one, five, three, six, five, thousand dollars. All great projects, moving along. Um, any questions? All right, none, thank you. Um, a motion, please?
Move to approve the sale of general obligation bond anticipation note, you know, five, one, five, three, six, and five, thousand dollars.
Motion by Mrs. Cantfield, second by Mr. Goodrich. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, uh, clerk of the board, uh, Mr. Reed Gutt.
Yes, Mr. Reed.
Welcome.
At least say our size.
Hey, we hold that here.
Yes, yes, actually.
I, the clerk of the select board, the town of Situate, Massachusetts certified that at a meeting of the board on May thirty, twenty twenty-three, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and which form was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear on the official record of the board in my custody. Voted to approve the sale of five million five hundred and sixty-five thousand um, for four fifty general obligation bond anticipation notes, the notes of the town dated June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three and payable December fifteenth, twenty twenty-three to Jefferies LLC at par of net crude interest if any, plus premium of eighteen thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty cents. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated May eighteen, twenty twenty-three and a final official statement dated May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be hereby ratified. be hereby ratified, confirmed, approved and adopted. Further voted that the town treasurer and the select board be and hereby are authorized to execute, deliver a significant amounts disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC rule eighteen C two dash twelve in such form as it may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post insurance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain a tax exempt status of the notes and to comply with relevant securities laws. Further voted that certi- certified certificates, I'm sorry, certi- certificates or documents related to the notes collectively, the documents may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document and electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further voted that each member of the select board, the town clerk and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute, deliver such certificates, receipts or other documents as may deem by them or any of them to be necessary, convenient to carry out the effective provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the agenda for the meeting, a copy of which is attached heretofore was posted to the bulletin board of the town at least twenty four hours before the meeting in compliance with section seven dash eleven of the town charter. I further certify that the votes were taken in a meeting open to the public and no vote was taken by secret ballot, that notice stating the place, date, time and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above vote was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours or in the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located or if applicable, in accordance with alternative method of notice prescribed by the approved, by the attorney general as set forth in nine forty CMR twenty nine oh three two B, at least forty eight hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting and remained so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decisions in connection with the sale of the notes were taken in executive session, all in accordance with general law, chapter thirty A, section eighteen to twenty five, as amended, dated May thirty of twenty twenty three.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very welcome.
You don't usually get too long ones in the.
Yeah, no.
Thank you, that was to everyone. And on this side, uh, Lorraine said I could mention it in one or two. Uh, the town seventeen, I seventeen told eighteen properties, the public option fifteen were bidded on and so far we have made over five hundred thousand dollars on those properties. So we want to know the final, final results for another couple of weeks, but I did want to.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. That goes to free cash here.
Free cash.
Free cash, yeah.
Hey, good night.
Good night.
Good day, I'm breaking.
Uh, Kevin? Next we have discussing vote, uh, T W contracts for the M A P C paving, area tree trimming and some FEMA disaster consultant project.
So, welcome aboard, Susan.
We don't have anything to read, right?
Well, I was, I was kind of upset that I didn't have anything prepared, but I'll try for next time. Um, so we have three contracts tonight. The first one is to T L Edwards and that's the M A P C paving contract. We do that as a consortium bid with a bunch of other towns. This year, the low bidder that did get the project was being investigated by the E I G's office for one reason or another. So we threw the bid out and it just cleared through the attorney general's office, is my understanding. So we're going with the second bidder, which is T L Edwards. That was a joint decision through the M A P C and a lot of municipal towns around me because they were being investigated. So this is why usually we're in a little sooner with the paving contract, but um, this is where we are and um, we're looking for approval so we can start getting off any lineup.
Kevin, what's the total of that? There are a lot of lineups, but I didn't see a sum total on it.
So there isn't a sum total because it usually goes by unit prices.
Okay, so based on what you.
So for example, we're going to do the water. Our plan is the gas companies been, going to do the gas line on Jericho Road. Then we're going to do the water line afterwards and then we're going to pave that road afterwards. So we'll take all the units and include that in the pricing and that's how we'll get the sum of that particular paving project. And that's how we do the paving through the M A P C contract.
Okay. Um, any questions for Kevin?
No.
No? Do I have a motion?
Move the select board work contracts to provide roadway management services to T L Edwards Incorporated, the unit bid prices as quoted.
Motion by Mr. Goodrich, second by, second by Mrs. Connolly, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, Kevin?
Excellent.
Tree trimming?
So the second project, um, we went up to bid for tree trimming and tree services. It's an hourly unit contract to do tree removal. Um, our previous um, tree people were Malpi tree. We've had extremely good luck with them, but they did not make it down in time for the bid and were not able to get disqualified. So um, we have had great luck with them in the past, but the little bidder was Pathfinder Tree Service. Um, we haven't used them before, so it'll be a new adventure. Hopefully they are as good and provide us good service as Malpi. But um, it's a tree service. If we get any tree that's too big or needs framework and our guys can't handle, we typically give up to one of the tree services. We also bring them in storms, obviously, and you know, to get extra crews to help out clean up so that it's a bad storm.
So this is just for large tree removal?
Large tree removal or.
Not really grooming or.
Most of the grooming is by the electric company because anything in the wires we can't touch, neither can they. So they handle a lot of that stuff. Um, our guys, we get some excellent guys, especially in the tree removal. We, we do have a bucket tractor, a good tractor. Um, they do a great job, but there are some trees that, you know, we don't want to take on.
And that's what this group is.
And that was put in, yeah.
Okay. Great. Um, any additional questions? There were four bids, um, and Pathfinder was the lowest. Okay. Any questions for the board? Uh huh. No? Motion?
Move that the select board award the contract to provide area tree service to Pathfinder Tree Services LLC for the hourly unit prices as bid.
Motion by Mrs. Harrison, second by Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Um, the third project, we put in R F P O and this is for our FEMA disaster consultant. So the company, our engineering firm that we are using, um, deal with FEMA and continuation that we've been using. Um, I believe Sean said the well firms, thirty, thirty firms. It was taken out in the uh, it was, it was put out in the registry, wasn't it? Yep. And it was open to everybody to bid on it. We did receive only one bid to continue it on and it was Tetra Tech, which is the company we've been using. I thought process was a lot of companies did not want to commit halfway through the project with the FEMA stuff and try to take it over and figure it out. Um, so Tetra Tech was the only better part and um, you know, we have had good luck with Tetra Tech. They've done a good job. Um, but as I think the board goes, FEMA, LIMA, C Z, you know, coastal zone management, the entire groups, it's, it's a daunting process to um, to get everything right.
So these consultants will help your staff work through some of that mitigation?
They do, they do a lot of the big permitting for like reperming and some of the other stuff, so. And they've, Tetra Tech's a giant national company. They've got a lot of resources, they're bringing in environmental lawyers and you know, a lot of different expertise that we don't have to pull out um, to help out with some of this stuff.
Any questions?
Um, just seventy five percent of this contract is reimbursable, is that correct? Or are we done?
Uh, it varies. Yeah, it's based on.
Yes, um, so this really is only to existing FEMA projects?
Correct.
And, and, okay, because what I was thinking was we've got especially the whole parkway, yes, pardon me on that, but um, you know, if they could, we're getting in at some point bids to do the um, engineering design work on what might be some of the possible solutions for flooding down there. And my question would be, would these people be available? They seem to have a private experience to at least look at or participate in the review of the RFPs and the responses, uh, given their expertise. Uh, and again, I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah, I, Karen, I think, I think we can handle that in-house. Uh, probably go with a smaller firm that's local.
Okay.
Just for the reason, you know, some of these people are high-priced people, uh, that.
Well, they're very experienced, clearly.
Yeah, they are.
Thirty five years, twenty five years, yeah.
We've got some local experienced people too who probably help out with it. And just so you know, we finally did get the drone flew the, flew whole parkway.
Were they shot at tonight at the, their meeting that I couldn't go to?
Um, no, because it's still working the data through. They're still putting all the data through together. So it's going to take a while, we'll mesh it all together. But it was finally, they tried a couple times and they haven't been able to.
Well, I'm sure you've got more than that work for them to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I just have a process question. When you put out a bid and ask thirty companies to spot it on here, one, do you, act, do you do a survey and ask them or an email? Say why not give a buy, just curious?
On something like this, it would.
Can I post it so soon?
Yeah, on something like this, we, it varies because some of the companies we've never heard of before and they might be a company out of California that just holds the plans, reads it and says, well, we don't want to go to Massachusetts. We do speak to some of the local companies. Um, you know, we probably know four or five, at least of the local companies that deal with coastal work. And the feedback we're getting from most of them is they're so busy right now and short on people that aren't willing to take on additional work and they don't want to take over where somebody else is already that far along.
Any else?
Motion.
Okay. I have a motion.
Move that the select board award the contract to provide FEMA consulting for administration services to Tetra Tech Incorporated on a climate and materials basis, not exceeding three hundred thousand dollars with seven hundred, seventy five thousand towards for the town.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Cannfield, second by Mrs. Connolly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Nancy.
On my way for them to move.
We'll get that out of there.
Actually, we spent seven hundred and seventy three thousand dollars with T L Edwards. It's seven hundred and.
Seventy three thousand with T L Edwards.
Oh, wow, okay. And eighty two thousand Malpi.
Uh, fame one trace.
Thank you for that. So here we are for our annual year end transfers. Again, looking to transfer two hundred fifty seven thousand two hundred and one dollars um, to move down to others to cover some expenses.
Yes, so um, the first step marked as either number one or all general fund transfers in between different handling departments, different departments. So if a department was just short, say, in payroll but they had money expenses, it's just moving to the department if they could. And everyone, any department that didn't have the responsibility to cover their problem child budget line, those are all going against the vacancy, uh, in the director planning development vacancy.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, it's covering the rest of them. So the one, big ones that, that fall in that are repair maintenance for facilities which has so many unexpected year end issues, electricity, one of the electricity lines for facilities. Um, a couple of those big ones are what falls there. The second uh, sub-transfers is for transfer station because of an ongoing uh, uh, coverage up there. They have, covering that position with overtime for the most part, which is problematic. So um, you did add this position up there in July. I believe they're starting to eye over that now so that will help with when these types of situations occur. But right now we need to move more money from their expenses into their payroll or they're going to overspend their payroll, which they cannot do. The third is for an S C T V that is funded from the at cable franchise expenses. Similar, they need more funds in their salaries. These hybrid meetings require more personnel, so he's spending more money. We did increase um, sets personnel lines for fiscal twenty four, but this is just fixing it for fiscal twenty three based on what's going on. Um, and then, I think it was a fourth one, it was a fourth one. I was talking before I bought, Widow's Walk. It was Widow's Walk. Um, and that was just taking some extra funds that we have in the debt service budget and moving them up to their repair maintenance lines because they had to bring the pumping to move the water around because it's available scarce in water. The first was second one, Chris.
Okay. Any questions? No. Okay, Nancy.
All right.
So.
Final motion?
Move to transfer from the available FY twenty three general fund, Widow's Walk Enterprise and Transfer Station Enterprise fund and budget lines as indicated on the provided spreadsheet under general fund, Widow's Walk Enterprise and Transfer Station Enterprise fund and budget lines respectively pursuant to Mass General Law, chapter forty four B, section thirty three, to resolve multiple N and D issues of unexpected costs to various requirements.
Motion by Mrs. Connolly.
Sorry.
Second by Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed, unanimously.
You're.
And you're next as well, right?
Um, just keep on going.
Okay.
Um, the next one is municipal employee disclosures. So these are the twenty B forms that you usually see at this time of the year where we have someone working for one department who after a job is recosted, no one else has been applying for it, takes a job in another department. In this case, we have Nicholas Johnson, who is a per diem dispatcher and also will be doing seasonal police work. Excellent. I believe you did have a second one as well, I saw in your.
I think we did.
Mister, which is Mister, I think it's Pragola. Um, I apologize, I forgot his last name. Um, and his, I talked about today was seasonal police work and he also works in the school part. Um, I saw it in your folder, but.
Yeah.
Of things to sign, I didn't.
Okay, it's in the motion now.
That's right, I'll put in the motion.
I believe it's in the motion on.
Nicholas and Eric?
Yes.
Got it, yes. Good job.
Okay, thank you. Um, any questions for Nancy?
For Jim, actually. I thought we weren't allowed to have seasonal police officers anymore.
We're running out.
So it's, it's a.
Because when they're appointed in one day after we knew, so.
Okay.
So we can't get any more and then once we have it all.
And then drive out the right.
And you'll be coming.
You can't follow for certain period of time and you have to have so many hours and so much work to do. Good stuff to do.
Any other questions? Thank you. Motion?
Move that the select board is required by Master General Law is chapter two sixty eight A, have reviewed the disclosure form for municipal employees Nicholas Johnson and Eric Fagerman to provide services to the situated police department as special officers and that such exemption is approved for municipal employees Nicholas Johnson and Eric Fagerman.
Motion by Mrs. Cannfield, second by, second, Mrs. Connolly, all in favor?
Aye.
Endless.
My apologies to Mr. Fagerman, I'm totally destroying his surname. Um, so the next one I have before you was um, for you to entertain the adoption of the new select board policy for the prohibition of a certain type of reimbursement. So Connolly under chapter four, section fifty eight, this town may not pay a bill incurred by any official for wines, liquors or cigars. It's been also been held by the department early to include cigarettes and tobacco product. The law dates back to eighteen eighty four, was last amended nineteen seventeen. Uh, at this time, I'm asking you to adopt a policy that will also prohibit something that is currently now legal, which is cannabis. So if you decide to adopt this policy, it would be to be, the number to be determined, a prohibition reimbursement to disallow cannabis at any deal incurred by an official for cannabis products and/or for a baby heroin addict.
So we're just adopting that new language?
Yeah, yes, it, it came up that if someone comes forward and say they, they go to a conference and, you know, show me your hotel receipt so that we make sure that you didn't have any liquor or any tobacco, but you had a, a gummy or whatever they are. I can't, I, I'm not going to reject that. There's no, other than saying, I don't think that was proper. I don't really have any license to. There's no, other than saying, I don't think that was proper, I don't really have any license, and obviously, no, I can't reimburse for that.
Or we were sending the others too.
Those are statues.
Oh.
And statues only a hundred and four years of days.
Alright, so, yes, I'm confused, okay. I read this to mean that, for example, if, if we send a person in to do a sting at a liquor establishment and we have to pay.
Those are exact.
Door. Okay.
Those are exact.
But, I, let's just use, who would, who would get a gift as a, a bottle of wine at some reception? And how are they turning around and asking the town?
That would be more, if, if you go to a conference, you can get reimbursed for meals. So if you go off for dinner and you get dinner and glass of wine, can't get reimbursed for a glass of wine.
So you just stop at the alcohol.
Got it, got it, yeah. And you can't get.
Stupid in the.
Reversal.
Right now, we have insurance.
Exactly.
It's amazing this sometimes, it's fire, huh?
Got it, okay.
Which is still enough.
Alright, please. Would someone like to make a motion?
Sure. Move to adopt a select work policy that is a prohibition on reimbursement, disallow the payment of any bill incurred by an official of cannabis products related paraphernalia.
Motion by Mr. Goodrich, second by, second, Mrs. Connolly, if I understand, all in favor?
Aye.
And just so everyone's clear, this is not because something came before me for reimbursement.
That's not a question, Nancy.
He's preempting that possibility.
Awesome.
Thank you for your diligence.
It's something I don't even think about in a second anymore, huh? We can't, really?
Not yet.
Okay, hold on.
Um, so, uh, in keeping with the compensation plan that was adopted by the town in, um, fiscal twenty-two, the fiscal twenty-four compensation plan is before you with a proposed COLA of two point five percent, which matches the renegotiated COLA with the AMP and cross-union news, which is similar to the positions that are on the non-quo, non-union classification plan.
Any questions?
I, obviously this is reflected in the close budget.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
So this is, this is non-union.
Yeah.
Remember we examined that all last summer, Nancy Bogut before us.
Yeah.
Too late, so pretty much too late, so.
So I have one question, the other classifications that are included in this below that are like hourly, like seasonal police officers, those are, you say they're adjusted periodically, are they, are they, is it a schedule that they're adjusted similar to COLA?
No, the twenty, uh, twenty twenty-five for current interference has been twenty twenty-five for probably the last five or six years, but the seasonal officers used to be eighteen and we brought them up to the twenty, twenty-five rate mid-year because there were any P I's left. So we're gonna lose a couple of seasonal officers we had, so we brought them up to twenty twenty-five, so that's more what it means by adjusting seasonally.
So you haven't like holistically looked at the ones below?
We did when we adopted the schedule two years ago.
Oh, so now two years.
Yeah, and most of them, let's say the assesses part of our time in non-union, so they're near a similar position on a union contract.
Okay.
Right now, we haven't looked at like the archivists and the shelf store for a couple of years.
No, just after a while, they thought of those, oh, yeah, they do.
Yeah, that's true.
If, if you're doing COLAs two point five, a couple of years out on your.
Yep. Any other questions? Anything else?
No.
Um, do you have a motion?
Move to adopt the F Y twenty-four classification plan for non-union employees with a two point five percent cost of living adjustment effective from July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Motion by Mrs. Connolly, second by Mrs. Cantfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the next one.
Revenue fund?
Yes, the athletic fields fund, uh, because of that pesky, uh, electricity bill that we never knew about, then we found out about and it's been, um, very annoying. It is likely that we're gonna go over the limit that you adjusted in December, so town meeting sets the expenditure cap on the fifty-three E and a half, sec, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three E and a half of all the months annually. You and, uh, uh, the project may can take votes to adjust that limit. I'm not sure we're gonna go over, but I'm asking you just to adjust the limit for the next month by five thousand dollars because I don't know these bills then all went place. And then the next agenda item will be to discuss the eighty thousand dollar bill that was before you previously for all the backfilling national grid in, um, May of twenty twenty to March of twenty twenty-two. So this is just to get them through the end of the fiscal year. They have a high enough expenditure that I think in fiscal twenty-four to be okay. And we're still working, just working with the, the recreation department and the, with school department to try to get a better cost allocator based on what the actual usage is. So I talked to Nick about that again because this is coming before you and said, you know, we really need to move that along so we get that closed off before we end the fiscal year, it's gonna be some further cost sharing. If there is what's come out of the revolving fund will be reduced.
Alright, so, um, the request is to increase the revolving fund to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the share, correct?
Correct.
Um, any additional questions?
You know, it's by June thirty.
Okay. Just to close on those bills. Uh, seeing no questions, do I have a motion?
Move to increase the settlement, uh, from the mass general, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three E and a half, athletic field revolving fund experiences set by the April one to eight, now meeting article eleven at fifty thousand dollars was amended on December first, twenty twenty-two floodwater meeting by addition twenty-five thousand to a total of a hundred and fifteen thousand for fiscal twenty-three.
Motion by Mrs. Cantfield, second, second by Mrs. Connolly, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So.
Do you want to add any ones to that yet?
Uh, do you want to go back to that, uh, but we still have athletic fields national grid meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, so this, the seventy-nine thousand dollar bill was before you, um, the board asked that questions be held for the school department to see if they would take some of that pain, Jim did meet with them and the superintendent agreed to pay half of the bill on the school department budget. So now, uh, remaining thirty-nine thousand nine seventy-six forty, which was taken out of the athletic field revolving. Um, but that is a huge chunk to come out of the athletic field revolving, so, um, Jim had asked that it come back for the board through your consideration to see if you wanted it to remain coming out of athletic field revolving or if you wanted to move it over to the winter by solar or ray revolving, both of which under section one oh two sixty, the general bylaws can pay electric bills and the winter by revolving fund has paid electric bills before. So if the board sees so fit to have one of those revolving ones pay it, I would recommend the winter by revolving fund because it has paid electric bills before, whereas solar has never paid electric bills at all, so I'd rather not start with that revolving. Both revolving funds have more than, um, uh, have sufficient balances right now, more that bill to be paid. So the winter by revolving fund had a one point five million and solar ray revolving fund had a one point two million.
What other expenses go against the athletic revolving fund?
Is the athletic field corner a maintenance of the fields, um, for like the infill, putting that back? Not that much because that's part of contract, um.
They've got a landscaper at the start of the year to do all the blotting and like that, doesn't that?
And that makes sense to me, you know, we've got the balance in the winter by, uh, account, people which is, I mean. Makes sense to me, Mrs. Cantfield?
Uh, just two questions, just, one is, um, it's just a laugh in my head, okay, um, I'll get back to that one.
It was appropriate with the winter buying, I have an idea on it.
It's, it's awesome. Um, oh, I know what it was, is, um, I think that the, the primary reason to do this is because if we don't, we, the athletic revolving fund, we're gonna be talking about raising rates for programming, I would think at some point.
If you're gonna be putting a huge dent in that revolving fund, if they had known all along what its electricity bills were going to be and had been able to set their rates appropriately, that would have been great. Finding out two and a half years later for the national grid, or by the way, you have a bill that you've never paid and now you have to pay it was very unpleasant and now we're still trying to figure out, okay, what is our normal cyclical bill and how much is it to youth groups, how much is it to the school, how much is it to town? And then groups have been billed, but it didn't come into to you, so there is a real disconnect between the cost and the revenue.
And my other question is, it was somewhere in the back of my head, I recall that when we, um, when the ray, when both those revolving funds, the wind and, and, and the, and their solar ray were put out, that it was tethered that we were gonna be able to pay all of our municipal electrical bills for those funds, was that something that stepped above the line? Or how does that?
No, um, that, the, the funds were placed before I came on board, we generate one hundred percent, over one hundred percent of the energy that we use. We do not pay our utility bills from the funds we receive, or access to a wind or such as solar. But I think that gets confusing. But we haven't had an audit to see where we stand now and that's what I've been trying to arrange the last couple of months with National Grid. Because we build several new buildings since the last time they determined that. And it's a factor when you look at some of the newer buildings that are potentially coming online. Can we do solar, do we still have the tasking, do we need to remain in the relationship, we have a social protect to sell some of our credits?
Okay, great, that's, that was.
Okay, great, I, I think it's a great recommendation.
And, yeah, so as part of the, um, when, when someone uses a field, the cost of the electricity is factored into that, is that right?
They get a separate bill for the lights that they use.
Okay, so unfortunately for the, for two, almost two years, nobody had a bill from us because we didn't get a bill from National Grid.
And we don't know how much it costs now.
Is that correct? We've only been getting bills since March of twenty twenty-two, so it's been, we haven't quite made the full year circle. So now they're going, and they didn't have the software that they now know that they need to have to say, okay, you have the lights on from this time to this time, so we should unfortunately spend money to you. So, um, Kevin Devon's been working with Nick Lombardo to get that all straightened out. That's how they came up with the, uh, likely that they came forward to the board last summer to impose. And that's where they're going back to get more information so that there can be better data provided to the school department, saying, okay, these are your events that are happening at these times. I guess you had lights on, and we didn't have lights on.
Now this is the issue, it's just the lights. So there's pathway lights, water lights that we leave on till at least ten, ten-thirty. Then that's gonna have to be appropriated, pushing it basically back to the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, and unfortunately, unfortunately, however you want to look at it, the way the, the usage works, the schools get the fields after school. So youth soccer, youth football are almost all lights all the time. Because they get, schools go first on the youth group school after that, so once they can stop and fall, they're under the lights and they're paying those fees. So, for F Y twenty twenty-three, even with the the tailwind cost, um, and the revolving fund, we're still looking at our revenue, we're stretching expenses, it's gonna be, those are the core bill.
So, alright, so, the revenue with the winter by the solar ray, it's not like there's a check every month?
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's.
It, it's a little wonky, they're getting better, they forgot to send us checks for a while, it took a little while to get them to understand that we're supposed to get checks, like, no, no, you can try to find what we get, we can get cash. Um, so they've started up again, so it's, um, it's just not like a, it's the first of the month, there's your check. Like, oh, look, here's a eighty thousand dollar check, that's awesome.
But that's a good point, is the point of the reason.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
We're still in a good spot.
Still in a good spot, ordinary.
Yeah.
Susan, did you have a question?
No, sorry. No, 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 I'm usually not like.
I know, I would like more information.
Yeah, sort of, sort of I can convince them that they can, they, they need to do it. I wanna know.
Alright, motion?
Move to per the paper, have thirty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars in quarters in national grid electricity bill from the revolving revolving fund.
Motion by Mrs. Cantfield, second, second by Mrs. Connolly, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold on, I'll check it out. Uh, as part of the board's, uh, adopted ambulance collection policy, annually, we look at the outstanding, uh, ambulance bills and then decide whether or not to debate any policy calls, we debate anything over twenty-four months, it is then the practice of the board to give them at least sixty months to let them go through all the different collection cases. So if we stick to that practice, what will be before the board to be, uh, debated would be fiscal two thousand, one bill from two thousand seventeen and then fiscal two thousand and eighteen. To be a total of sixty-nine thousand twenty-seven dollars and three cents for two years combined. As you can see, fiscal nineteen is, uh, outstanding for eighty-one thousand and fiscal twenty is outstanding for shy eighty-nine thousand and for all four years, it has been nothing collected in fiscal twenty-three. So usually there's something, but, uh, there hasn't been anything collected for those years.
So you mean, they've been unsuccessful for those years for trying all this year, except for.
It, usually there's a little something collected, the deputy collector picks something up, something else gets picked up when they pay another bill. Um, fiscal twenty-three, for those particular four years, there weren't any supplemental collections. And keeping in mind that our annual billing is just over two million and our collection is usually about what we can legally collect, it's somewhere around fifty percent. Because we bill it doesn't mean we can collect it because of Medicaid or Medicaid requirement for restrictions.
Alright, so, we're looking to pay sixty-nine thousand twenty-seven dollars and three cents for years, fiscal years two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the recommended agreements for all outstanding handbill charges from F Y seven, two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen, totaling sixty-nine thousand twenty-seven dollars and three cents.
Move by Mrs. Connolly, second, by Mr. Goodrich. I have a question, where is the sixty-nine thousand a bit charged, you guys?
The receivable will be reduced and deferred revenue.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty.
I have one for you, it's the easy one. So if you may recall, um, at the social county meeting in the fall, we normally allocate some few hundred dollars worth of money we got from ride shares for a purchase. They finally changed the statute, if you receive less than twenty-five thousand dollars to chief executive quarry, which would be the floodboard, can just vote how to use those funds and they have to be used for some transportation related, meaning roads. So I'm asking the board to allocate the wanting eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty cents in transportation network company funds to roadway improvements. And we'll just allocate a bill to.
We still have about a half a bottle.
Yep, and over the last seven years, we've gotten four thousand nine hundred and seventy-five rolls.
Keep watch. Alright, motion?
I have one question.
Oh, sorry, questions?
Just to catch up to the agenda.
I'm trying, okay.
Um, in theory, if, could these funds in the future, because it's so, um, be allocated to, um, something like bicycle wrecks or improvements, um, that bicycle condition might be.
You could.
Because it's related to.
Yeah, but if, with the current level that you're getting, it's just been easier to put it towards.
Oh, a hundred percent, I just was curious about the, the flexibility question.
Yeah, if, if you want to do something that specific, I checked it before, it broke a chief for vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Question? Do you do a motion?
I don't think we did.
Move to allocate the eight hundred and fifty-five dollars in places received transportation for company funds to roadway improvements.
Motion by Mrs. Cantfield, second, uh, Mrs. Connolly, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we have a number of, uh.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, you're welcome, sorry to hear it, I'm sorry to just begin.
Thank you for all your work. And then new business, we have discussion mode on some one-day line and mall licenses. Um, we have several of them in here listed, all the backup is provided, um, so, anyone want to take the motions?
Sure.
Move to approve a one-day line license for four hundred catering for private event at the Sichuan Maritime Center on Sunday, June fourth, twenty twenty-three, from eleven AM to two PM. Further, move to approve a one-day line and mall license to secure your service for private event at the Sichuan Maritime Center on Thursday, June eighth, twenty twenty-three, from six PM to ten PM. Further, move to approve a one-day line and mall license to secure your service for private event at the Sichuan Maritime Center on Saturday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, from five thirty PM to nine thirty PM. Further, move to approve a one-day line and mall license to simply cater for private event at the Sichuan Harbor Community Building on Sunday, June fourth, twenty twenty-three, from eleven AM to three PM. Further, move to approve a one-day line and mall license to simply serve you for private event at the Sichuan Maritime Center on Friday, June ninth, from six PM to ten PM. Further, move to approve a one-day line and mall license to primary line catering for private event at the Sichuan Maritime Center on Tuesday, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, from four thirty PM to six thirty.
Motion by Mr. Goodrich, second, by Mrs. Campfield, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Lorraine, for all that.
Mm-hmm.
It's a lot of work.
And Jen?
And Jen, thank you, Jen. All right, um, we do have some, any liaison reports? We're gonna create new liaisons.
Next meeting.
Next meeting?
Next meeting.
So think about that.
I'll send the list out ahead of time so you can all look at it.
Okay.
And get them on.
Choose. Okay, um, any?
I did have a.
You know, sir?
Let's see.
Okay.
Anyone else to say?
I don't know, we did, I have, I have reviewed it and I'm sure the board will receive it too, the district, um, commission has, as of, right before we walked it, set some recommendations about the use of work ethic in, uh, which I have not even read yet, but it, um, if it's just a name, then I'll call it, then two guys to review as well. So they spent a lot of time thinking about potential, um, uses on that, probably I don't.
Okay.
Okay, good to see.
Yeah.
Okay. I just found that you know that Jim and I are in meeting with Mike Kuchiar from, um, the Grattan Group, uh, who partnered with us, uh, also green, um, he's in the news and what he's. So they're coming to talk to us about what they've assessed, so we're doing that thirteen, thirteen, we do.
They were hard now, about two weeks ago, that's good movement.
Well, it's, we say, it, it, they just said.
Right, the issue is gonna be, you can't get enough units in there with the cost of that building to drive down the unit cost, so how many additional units would you have to allow to be built on site to get the unit cost of the building to where it's.
Perfect.
At the minimum.
Yeah.
So, it'll be interesting to have that, so.
So would we be in a position to do the same sort of deal, to go give them the property?
Is the afterbid.
Okay. But it would be similar, that the financial advantage to them would be that they're getting something for nothing, now, it's like buying a castle, right? If you put, you, you could pay nothing for it and spend a million dollars to fix it, so, um, but it seems to me as though that's been a good arrangement with lost green, so, um.
Yeah.
My hope would be we could come to a similar arrangement and that we don't own it and manage it, which is a real problem.
A little more complicated because we're still on the land. To, uh, ground bases.
Land, yeah, lease, ground, yeah.
Well, affordable, we'll.
It's a little more complicated, but not.
Thank you for moving that ball.
So it comes back out, might not move anywhere. Can I say, thank you for moving the ball, I said it might build it up, you have to move it over this, so it take it back out.
Well, let's explore it, so we know.
So the, the, we'll look down, we'll get some good numbers on.
Yeah, yeah.
You're smart.
Yeah.
He's great.
Um, any correspondence, if you have a little bit? Adam Clark?
Got this today, the town in offshore reorganization.
Oh, I saw that, I'll, I'll read it for you, Susan.
So just have one with regards to the.
Oh, did you find it?
Yeah, that's fine. Uh, we, we threw this on you last minute. Just a note that the Marshfield Board reorganized, I'm sure we'll send them somewhere new. Um, we get this evening, um, summer and fall beach cleanups for twenty twenty-three, that'll keep Sichuan clean, uh, the first one starts, um, it says, oh, all, they're Saturday, all Saturdays from nine to noon, first one is at mine at March the tenth, July eighth, Egypt Beach, August twelfth, Sand Hills, then September ninth, Museum Beach, October fourteenth, Amarok, and then November fourth, Peggy. So that's great, so thank you to Sichuan Beach Commission for organizing that, that was another correspondence. Um, there's also correspondence, um, from the Division of Marine Fisheries, um, and that's really just talking about the closing of the Gulf of South here, where we clearly spoke about at the beginning of the meeting. And I guess if you see anything else, I mean, we do have this farmer's market, but I think that needs to be amended, so I'm not gonna use that. So they have a natural resource. And then I just need, um, except the supplement.
Move to accept the minutes of the Tuesday, May ninth, twenty twenty-three, um, meeting of select board.
Move by Mrs. Connolly, second by Mrs. Campfield, all in favor?
Aye.
And that's it, I'm saying, yeah, second one, and then do I have a motion to adjourn and sign up? So, so, move by Mrs. Campfield, second by Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, good luck.